Just wait a minute for the attendees to start to populate. Thank you, guys. Okay, it looks like we've now. I think I'll give us until 6:32 and then I'll start the meeting just because it looks like people are arriving.
That's better.
Tim, I believe I'm going to make the announcement about Zoom interpretation right before you start, if that's okay?
That's fine.
Great. Just give me the green light when you're ready.
Sure. I think I'm, we're gonna first call to order. And then do the pledge of allegiance and then we'll go to roll call. Okay?
So I'll do that before all that.
Okay, we'll start with that.
Okay.
I suggest we go ahead and start. We have 145 attendees and it's 6:32. Julie, please. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting. This meeting will be interpreted simultaneously into Spanish. If at any time during the event, a Spanish speaker makes a comment or asks a question in Spanish, the English speakers can listen to the interpretation by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen and choosing their English language. Muy buenas noches, bienvenidos y bienvenidas a la reunión. Esta reunión será interpretada al español simultáneamente. Para escuchar en español, por favor, haga clic en el icono del globo que se encuentra al pie de la página y elija el idioma español. También puede hacer clic donde dice mute original audio para silenciar el audio original y escuchar solo la interpretación. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Sonoma regarding the Sonoma Developmental Center Draft Alternatives. This is a joint meeting of the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission, North Sonoma Valley Municipal Advisory Council, and the Springs Municipal Advisory Council. I would like to begin with the pledge of allegiance. If you'd all like to follow along. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice. Thank you. Now, before all, I'm just gonna mention that throughout the meeting, Karina Garcia from the Supervisor Goran's office will be making periodic announcements for how to access the Spanish translation, just so you're all aware of that. As we had earlier, and now I'd like to ask the Springs MAC Vice Chair Ray Willett to call role for the Springs MAC.
Chairperson Alcaraz. Councilperson Alcaraz. No. Councilperson Barrow.
Here.
Councilperson Lombard.
Here.
Councilperson Goldman.
Here.
Councilperson Reyes. Councilmember Reyes. Let's hear. Chair Itri.
Here.
And I'm here.
Great. Thank you very much. I'd like to invite the North Sonoma Valley MAC Vice Chair Vicky Handren to manage roll call for the NSV MAC.
Thank you. Chair Dawson.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Dos.
Here.
Councilmember Eagles.
Here.
Councilmember Nardo Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Newhauser.
Here.
And Council, Councilmember Oldbride.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey is, is attending for the, not on behalf of the MAC, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
He is my vice chair. I'd like to ask our esteemed Secretary Spalding to call role for the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Welcome. Big meeting. Chair Freeman.
Here.
Secretary Spalding is here. Vice Chair Dickey.
Here.
Commissioner Curly. May not be here tonight. Commissioner Kokanen.
Here.
Commissioner Keizer. Right. Commissioner Brown.
Yes, present.
And Commissioner Trusdale.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Verenti.
Here.
Commissioner Vella.
Here.
Here.
I believe the two city of Sonoma Commissioners, Gelsa Barnett and Robert Felder have been excused. They have a meeting of their own this evening. Do we have Commissioner Mullin?
Here.
And then we have Commissioner Cornwall, are you present? But recused. Not present. Commissioner Carr.
Here.
And ex officio Emeritus, sorry, Emeritus Commissioner Bransett.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Spalding. I'd like to first, this meeting is gonna run a little differently than what we're used to. And so a few housekeeping rules, please keep yourself on mute. All panelists, keep yourself on mute unless you are gonna be speaking. There's echo that will occur if you don't. I want to announce that the chat and QA Q and A functions have been turned off for the meeting. This is to prevent any potential violations of the Brown Act and public comment outside of the time when the pop, public comment is open. That's a message for the public. I'd like to just suggest to you that do the amount of community interest in this topic. We are going to ask the public and our council members and commissioners to keep their comments brief and to the point and ask that people really pay attention if something's been covered. Certainly, you can let us know that you're reinforcing it, but please don't go on a diatribe. So we're gonna try and keep to our one and a half minutes. And we'll take it from there. So at this point, as in our regular meetings, I'd like to invite the pub, public to comment. If they have any comments, but it is limited to items not appearing on the agenda tonight. So if anybody in the public has something they would like to make a comment regarding other than the SDC alternatives, please raise your hand and we'll recognize you.
If I may, the chair.
Please.
This is Karina Garcia with the Spanish interpretation announcement.
Okay.
Thank you. Para los miembros de la comunidad que desean hacer un comentario en español en los artículos que no están en nuestra agenda del día de hoy, por favor de utilizar el icono de levantar mano en la aplicación, se les otorgará el permiso para dar su comentario. Si lo desea hacer en español, también contamos con interpretación al inglés. Y si desea escuchar esta reunión en español, por favor de utilizar el icono de interpretación en la parte baja a la derecha de su pantalla. Hay selecciones Spanish o español. Gracias. Thank you, Chair Freeman.
Welcome and thank you. Okay, seeing no hands raised by the public, I'm going to assume that we just move right into our agenda item, which is the SDC Alternatives Report. We will receive this report. The presentation will be by Diet and Batia, Permit Sonoma Staff. The site address is 15,000 Arnold Drive in Eldridge. Presenters are Brian from Permit Sonoma, in Rajiv Batia, and Helen Pearson from Diet and Batia. And they will be promoted. Let me just give a project description if I may. Permit Sonoma, Sonoma County's Permit and Resource Management Department has released three draft land use alternatives to guide the redevelopment of not the 945 acre Sonoma Developmental Center. Plans call for between 990 to 1290 units of housing, creating a walkable community with an emphasis on affordable housing and active transportation to lessen automobile use. Environmental preservation incorporated in the project will protect 700 acres of open space between Jack London State Historic Park and Sonoma Valley Regional Park at a wildlife corridor and preserve Sonoma Creek and its tributaries. Commercial recreational and civic spaces will be built for use by residents, employees, and the greater Sonoma Valley. Alternative A, conserve and enhance. This preserves the most historic buildings while creating low density housing and the second most jobs of any proposal. Alternative B, core and community. This creates the most housing units in a walkable mixed-use neighborhood with community uses, restaurants, and retail uses. Alternative C, which is renew, creates a regional innovation hub, bringing the most jobs of any proposal, neighborhood agriculture, and housing units to support these uses. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to our presenters.
Thank you, Chair Freeman, and Chair Dawson and Chair Itri for the time this evening. My name is Brian O. Comprehensive Planning Manager for Permit Sonoma. And it's, in some ways, it's, it's very fitting, you know, to, we're grateful for the opportunity to present across these three councils. You know, this is a once in a generation opportunity to redevelop Sonoma Development Center. And it, you know, clearly has long range planning impacts, but it'll also be felt throughout the Sonoma Valley in particular. So we're grateful for the opportunity. And I am heartened to see some familiar folks from our Saturday workshop. And this will be a bit of a pared down version of the presentation given on Saturday. But we, you know, want to provide a little bit of context to the published drafts that we released at the start of this month. And we're about halfway through. So we have sort of accepting comments through the 28th of November. Again, and then I'll walk through a little bit of a timeline here with the presentation. One moment. All right. Chair Freeman, are you able to see this presentation slide deck?
Yes, I am.
All right. Okay, so for our agenda this evening, just a quick schedule overview of where we're at in the three-year process. We'll do a presentation. So I'll do the front end of the presentation. And we're also joined here by Rajiv Batia and Helen Pearson from our prime consultants of Goten Batia. And so they'll walk us through some of the more detail in the alternatives. And then, you know, we'll take a little bit of time just to, to talk a little about the next steps and just some closing comments before turning it over to the respective committees here. And so project timeline. And we are, if you could see my mouse here. Within this three-year process, we are, we have released the project alternatives with the intention to receive community feedback. And then ultimately, this will lead our staff, Permit Sonoma, to present a draft preferred alternative to the Board of Supervisors tentatively scheduled for the end of January 2022. And then I think one point worth mentioning here is, you know, the alternatives that we have presented here, it is meant to inform a dialogue with the community. Ultimately, the preferred alternative that gets presented as a recommendation to the board. And, you know, that may end up being a combination of the three alternatives. And, you know, depending on the comments that we received throughout this month, you know, we'll also wanna take any additional comments into consideration. And then, you know, that's really gonna kick off a, you know, pretty strict timeline here. And, you know, we'll look to finalize a preferred alternative in the month of February. And then we expect to publish the draft environmental impact report as well as a draft specific plan next summer. And then we look to, to return to the Sonoma Valley CAC. And that again is gonna trigger our ability to go to planning commission and then ultimately for board adoption in August 2022. And so let me make sure here. Okay, so the purpose of the alternatives. And this is to carry out the vision and guiding principles, which I will touch on in the next couple slides here. And it's mainly to present a range of possibilities and understand their impacts. So we have done the analysis based on these three alternatives. And again, we want this to enable and inform community dialogue on how we can, as a community, redevelop the Sonoma Development Center campus. And so for regional context, we have Glen Allen to the north and also to the south springs, and that makes up the, the greater Sonoma Valley area as well as the city of Sonoma to the south. Okay, and I'm gonna just run through four slides here, and this is mainly just to identify a, a sample of some of the constraints that we need to take into consideration that went into ultimately the, the three alternatives that were presented. And so this site is unique. You know, anyone that spends even just a few minutes on campus can feel it. The historic buildings to the west of Arnold Drive, you know, this is, you know, not a infill project. This is, you know, we have community assets. So again, this is something that we do need to take into consideration. And the cost that goes into it, we'll talk a little bit more about that at the, the end of the presentation. And then other constraints to consider, the vegetation and open space. And, you know, we hear a lot about this. We've spent a lot of time thinking this through, which is the wildlife corridor, particularly the one just north of the campus that, that goes east and west, just south of Suttonfield Lake. And we would be remiss without, you know, really wanting to understand and acknowledging, you know, local trauma and just the reality of, you know, where we're at, not just within Sonoma Valley, but the context of the state. And so this designates, this highlights the wild, wildland urban interface, we, for short, we call. And so this context is really important and, you know, a big consideration that went into our planning efforts. And this is where, you know, I think it's, this is the most eye-opening component. And again, we're not starting from scratch. And so these are some of the redevelopment constraints that we had to take account. And so there's a state legislate, state legislation and for permanent protection of the open space surrounding the core, protection of the Eldridge Cemetery, housing prioritizing affordable and for people with developmental disabilities. It needs to be economically feasible. We need to maximize third-party purchaser interest. And, and this is all based on the county and state agreement. My understanding is it's, you know, the first of its kind for the state in this disposition process. They own the property. They will continue to own the property and go through the disposition process. And but we were able to advocate for a local planning effort. And so all of this has to be completed by the end of 2022. And there really are no assurances. You know, we've been staying in consistent contact with our state counterparts. And no assurances beyond this agreement. And, you know, and there's some clause within the legislation. I mean, essentially, you know, we wanna go through with this process. We want it to be community-driven. Ultimately, it, you know, will end up in the hands of our state counterparts to go through the disposition and marketing of the sale of the, of the site. And then financial, there's infrastructure costs. Currently, they have staff you know, on campus, you know, regular maintenance involved. And so our early analysis points to, you know, a minimum of $70 million for the infrastructure costs. Historic preservation. And so there's varying levels of preservation. This is another key interest from the community on how much to preserve of the buildings, the physical buildings. And there's a cost to that. The main building alone, the iconic building west of campus, estimate 17 to $30 million for rehabilitation of the building. Currently, you know, no one is even able to enter that building. And, you know, due to safety concerns. And then ultimately, it's community context. And this is why we are so grateful for this opportunity this evening to come and present to our community leaders and also continue to hear from our public about how to shape and redevelop this site. We're in with, we're within Sonoma Valley. Other considerations that we need to take into account are the environmental impacts as well. And so all of this leads into, you know, what we ended up publishing at the start of this month. And so community outreach to date, the state, and there's state and community-led planning efforts that predates, you know, our planning process. And so that was really for us a jump off point. There was a previous consultant, you know, lots of work done, not just with the community, but on the technical analysis side. And so we were able to, to leverage a lot of the investment that the state had put in to the disposition of the property. You know, before we entered this process. But to date, a number of efforts, you know, obviously with the pandemic and being virtual, much like this evening. And much of that has been in person, has been virtual. But I think unfortunately, my colleague Irving Corta is stuck in traffic this evening. And but he and was able to partner up with the district office with the leadership of Supervisor Goran, huge support from her staff to do an in-person community workshop all in Spanish yesterday evening. And that was one of the big priorities that we had identified earlier this fall. We brought on a firm consensus building institute. And some of you may be familiar with their work. And, you know, they really helped us develop an outreach and engagement plan on how best to improve our efforts with the communities that we have connected the least with throughout this process. We recognize that in the virtual setting, it was not ideal. And so we took measured steps. There's a report on our website identifying the steps that we have and will continue to take. And some of those groups that we've identified, this particular of the school community. So we've invested a lot of, much of our engagement time working with local schools, the Latinx community within Sonoma Valley, as well as the community to the south of Sonoma Development Center. And then again, this, you know, we're so grateful for the opportunity to, to partner up with District One, particularly with Karina. So thank you so much for that. And then the next two slides here, the vision. So again, this is all material that can be found on our website. And this was presented and sort of affirmed at the Board of Supervisors workshop in January of this year. And the vision for this site is a vibrant and sustainable community. There's a number of other values that were identified. Ultimately, it's a hub of community life in Sonoma Valley. And so this was really our, our North Star as well as a set of guiding principles. We have 10 guiding principles, promote a vibrant mixed-use community, and on down to embrace diversity. And I'll just sit on this, this one for a minute, just ensure long-term fiscal sustainability. And, you know, we've been mindful that this is a planning process that ultimately needs to be financially feasible, economically sound. And that's something that's been crystal clear, not just from the state mandate, but also within our planning practice for this effort. And then ultimately, it's, it's a legacy of care. So this is, I have colleagues here at Permit Sonoma. I have neighbors here where I live in the city of Petaluma who have family members. I think many of us can relate to this. It's a key, it was a key job creator within Sonoma Valley at its peak, 1,900 jobs. And also, you know, had the responsibility and care for 3,700 clients. And so we're mindful, we're of the history, the context. I mean, yes, there's the historical preservation of the buildings, but there's also a cultural and societal preservation that we recognize as a priority for this process. And so I will turn over to Helen after this slide, but I, I think this is a really important slide as well. And so taking all the constraints into consideration, there are a number of attributes that cut across the alternatives. And these were things that we felt, you know, had to, to, you know, come to the top. It had to be prioritized. So that obviously the preservation of open space, going above and beyond sort of the existing open space as well as preservation of existing and adding on to active recreation space. You know, we envisioned this to be a vibrant hub, a, in some ways, a self-sustaining community. And so ensuring that those amenities are there are critical. And then just connectivity to the greater Sonoma Valley. So how are we making these connections? How are we preserving the corridor, the wildlife corridor in particular? So, you know, this is one thing we'll touch on in the alternatives. And then the fires, you know, we have been intentional in understanding and working with our experts on, you know, what, what we can do to help mitigate some of that. So restored wetland. You know, this was something that, again, across the board is important for us to, to ensure in this process. And as well as, you know, potential managed landscape as fire break. And so we'll go into a little bit more detail, but I think this context again is really critical to ensure sort of an informed community discussion around what this redevelopment could look like. And so with that, I will turn it over, I believe, to Helen. And Helen, just let me know about slide, and I'm happy to walk that, walk us through.
Thanks, Brian. So I'm gonna walk us through the three alternatives presented in the report with some conceptual land use diagrams and models that represent approximate building locations and areas for the three alternatives. Next slide. Alternative A, called conserve and enhance, envisions the planning area as a historic destination and a hub for new residential development in the Sonoma Valley. The majority of the historic contributing buildings west of Arnold Drive are, are preserved and a mix of uses occupies infill and historic development. The majority of the historic contributing buildings west of Arnold Drive are are preserved and a mix of uses occupies infill and historic development. The main lawn is a community hub surrounded by a variety of uses, including a community center. The area south of the main lawn includes space for potential institutional use. And the area east of Arnold Drive features new residential development. As well as a mid-sized resort at the southeast that's connected to the site's historic agricultural lands. Next slide. So before we get into some. Views and some looking, uh, a quick look at the land use for the three alternatives, I just wanted to show these. Ex- examples of some precedent developments that we've been looking at as a project team to make sure that the. Development proposals that we're putting forward are consistent with development in the area, so these kind of. Provide an example that we're looking at, all of the development is remaining. Below three stories outside of the main lawn area that already has some. Existing tall buildings that will try and match. Um, next slide. So a setback is maintained along both sides of Arnold Drive, and the roadway is improved as a tree-lined pedestrian and bicycle-oriented parkway. The existing creek setback is preserved and new recreational spaces are added on both sides of the creek. The wildlife buffer in the northeast corner of the site is expanded in this alternative. Next. The site is connected across Arnold Drive with a café on the east, complementing the community hub that surrounds the main lawn. The site provides a gathering space and community center for residents, visitors, and professionals in the area. Next slide. Alternative B, called core and community, retains important historic buildings on the west side. Infilled with a mix of uses to create a vibrant and walkable core area. Development is concentrated within a quarter-mile distance or a five-minute walk from the main lawn. With enhanced pedestrian connections in this area. Community facilities, including a gym, community center. Restaurants and small retail uses occupy key buildings surrounding the main lawn. Creating a community hub. The main building is reimagined as a historic hotel. And a new roadway connection between Arnold Drive and Highway twelve is proposed at the site to alleviate traffic increases along Arnold Drive. Next. Densities are highest in this alternative within walking distance from the core. Tapering off towards the edges of the planning area to integrate with the open spaces. And the adjacent single-family neighborhoods. The existing creek setback is expanded, as is the existing wildlife corridor in the northeast. In addition, a managed landscape buffer is introduced along the eastern edge of the site to help address the growing risk of wildfire in the area. Next. Existing open spaces throughout the site are preserved, including the historic baseball field. The scale of development and existing setbacks along Arnold Drive are maintained, and the roadway is reimagined as a pedestrian and bicycle-oriented boulevard. Next. Alternative C, called Renew, reimagines the SDC campus as an innovative regional hub with an emphasis on resiliency. While preserving key historic resources at the site. The northwest portion of the site is reimagined as an innovation hub and a center for research and development in the Sonoma Valley region. The main building is reimagined as a community center, and a hotel occupies the historic Sonoma House and surrounding area. Next. The southeast corner of the site is reimagined as an agri-hud with community farming and historic agricultural uses. The existing creek creek setbacks are expanded, and the existing wildlife corridor in the northeast corner of the site is nearly doubled in size. In addition, a three-hundred-foot managed landscape wildfire buffer is added to the eastern edge of the site, improving the site's resiliency against wildfire. An expanded setback along Arnold Drive preserves the rural look and feel of the site, and the roadway is improved for bicycles and pedestrians. Next. Commercial and community-serving uses around the main lawn create a community hub for residents and visitors. While mixed-use developments just east of Arnold provide spaces for cafes, community resources, and gathering areas. Next. Each of the alternatives preserves the two historic landmarks. And key historic contributing buildings on the site, but the extent of preservation varies between the three alternatives. Alternative A, shown on the far left of the screen, preserves nearly all of the contributing buildings which are shown in pink. While alternatives B and C also preserve some existing buildings that are not historic contributors. Because they may be more easily reused, costing less to adapt. These are shown in orange. Next slide. While the amount of historic preservation varies across the alternatives. The overall building area remains fairly consistent with what currently exists on site, which is shown on the top left of the screen. The three alternatives vary. In the potential amount of housing jobs, housing units and jobs, the types of uses. The approaches to recreational and open space, and their relationship to the surrounding natural landscape. All three alternatives include twenty-five percent income-restricted affordable housing, which exceeds the county's inclusionary housing requirements. Alternative B provides the most housing units, and alternative C provides the most jobs with an innovation hub for research and development. All three alternatives expand the open space on the core campus from what exists today. With alternative C adding the most protected area to the wildlife and creek corridors. With that, Rajiv is going to talk through some further comparisons between the alternatives.
Thank you, Helen, and good evening, everyone. This, I'm going to first talk about the transportation impacts, the graphic on the top-left-hand side shows the traffic volume, settle result from the alternatives. And we have provided information on the historic peak, just uh, for way, by way of context. The traffic north of the site. Along, not along, on the drive, not to the site, is expected to. Uh, be where it was at its historic peak, and largely similar to where the existing conditions are. In the chart, which is further down below, you can see that the traffic in that segment. Through the Glen Ellen Village portion will actually flow through very smoothly projected traffic level of service C, which is exceptionally good. Where we would see some increased traffic and delays are in the portion of Arnold Drive, that's south. Of the site, and you can see that both in the graphic with the bar charts, as well as in some of the numbers out there. In many of these instances, uh, under several of these alternatives, the traffic conditions will actually be similar to where they are. In terms of the existing level of service. So for, for example, the Arnold Drive portion from SDC to Medron Road is currently at LOSD, it'll remain at LOSD throughout. Under C, though, further down south, you would see a little bit further deterioration. Um, to, you know, from D to E and F, and this, this is largely a result of not just. Um, traffic being generated from SDC, but also regional through traffic that is passing through the area. Um. What I want to point out is that the traffic conditions are generally similar across the alternatives, there will be some congestion in Highway twelve. And SDC will add to that congestion a little bit, we have in order to be a connection. Between Arnold Drive and Highway twelve, and that largely helps to relieve traffic under, whether it's Alternative B or any of the other alternatives. Uh, from Arnold Drive. Now, while we presented the traffic level of service information under the California Environmental Quality Act. Local agencies can no longer use traffic level of services in the EIR, starting last year under new state law. So we'll be looking at vehicle miles travel, and we have attempted to do that. In the next slide a little bit, um, just looked at some initial results with that. Uh, the, the three alternatives will have a somewhat similar increase in terms of vital delay. Uh, throughout the county of, but somewhat small on the small order between two-point-two percent and two and two percent with Alternative C. Fairing the best, all three alternatives will lead to roughly approximately twenty percent. Non-auto trips mainly captured within the site, and Alternative C does the best because it has the most number of jobs. Compared to housing units. Uh, next slide. There are significant factors affecting financial feasibility, it's actually sobering to look at these numbers. Ryan mentioned infrastructure, that's seventy million dollars alone, and and by the way, that doesn't account for all of the infrastructure, that's infrastructure we have looked at. We do believe that there may be some bridges, some additional landscaping and so on, the cost for which may exceed. Even seventy million dollars, the main building alone is seventy, thirty million dollars, and that doesn't include historic preservation of other structures at the site. Market values are strong for residential and hotel users, they generate net positive value to subsidize other users. And just want to highlight that, the office and R and D market is not as strong out there. Despite all this, end-users or public agencies must fund. Twenty-seven to forty million dollars of historic building restoration costs. And can you bring up the next slide, Brian, and I want to show you as to how these play out, so in turquoise color. Is our assessment of of revenues derived minus cost developed, and that's a turquoise, and you can see that A and B alternatives. Barely pencil out. Um, we have, though, attributed. Costs that are in the red color bar and the pink color bar to institution and users, and those are there for all A and all B, and those are largely for. Historic um, users or historic buildings that these users would occupy. And then in pink are the costs for community facility costs, which are not reflected in that turquoise color out there. We have for our financial feasibility analysis perspective, assume that. Affordable housing would be provided at twenty-five percent of the overall. Housing, this is higher than the fifty-two twenty number, assumed, um, generally required by the county. And that's part of our financial analysis, and that's the floor, that's not the cap, to the extent we can find more funds through more intelligent land use planning. Or additional funds beyond what the site can generate. Certainly, the the percentage of affordable housing can be greater. There were several questions that came up during the workshop and have continued to crop up about financial feasibility analysis. And and you know, what might happen if you do this or do that. And if you were to go to the project website, sdc-specific-plan.com, on the first page there itself, there's a button on the right-hand side of that page. We have assembled some frequently asked questions, and there are about, there are, there are about five pages of those out there. And you know, one of the questions that has popped up is, for example, that why cannot we have, for example, less housing, well, the fact is, we have a lot of. Infrastructure historic preservation costs. Affordable housing requirements, and as a, as you can see in this slide, we are barely penciling out, and we are not even penciling out if we would include some additional. And cost that we've, we've assumed on part of other. Um, and users. So at the end of the day, you know, the state has mandated certain drivers for us, those are preservation of open space beyond the core campus, all alternatives do that. We have gone beyond the state mandated requirements, we provided more open space, but there are other requirements. Relating to financial feasibility and promoting housing, so we have been very, very mindful. That the alternatives we generate, and ultimately the preferred plan that we generate. Has to be financially, financially feasible and supportable, so a lot of effort has gone into that, the hotel is a positive use. Residential uses are positive use. And they are essentially the drivers, they, they're going to pay for all of those um, deferred maintenance and other infrastructure improvement costs. Next slide. Thank you.
Okay, well, so I again just wanted to reiterate uh, the opportunity here, um. Is, you know, today, this evening uh, wraps up a, a, a week, a series of discussions, um, that was kicked off. On Friday, um, and then we hosted the virtual workshop on Saturday, over two hundred, I believe, two hundred and seventy-five attendees. Um, many um, of you that are in the audience here, and then uh, yesterday evening with the town hall. Um. As well as uh, this evening, and then the culmination really, um, you know, we're looking for that feedback to help drive ultimately what the preferred alternative will look like. Um, and so, um, you know, we're really encouraging comments to come um, to us by November twenty-eighth. And this will give us enough time to really take a look, um, you know, myself. Our staff, um, you know, each and every email that has been coming in, uh, really, since the onset of. This process, uh, we are taking a look at it, we are taking the input, and you know, we're hopeful that. Um, you know, that input, it has been um. Presented and reflective um, in some component of these three alternatives. And again, the big target that we're looking at here, um, is ultimately, you know, bringing a, uh, bringing to the Board of Supervisors. Um, ultimately for adoption of the final EIR and specific plan. Um, which, again, will keep us on track, uh, cuts it a little bit close to our. Three-year commitment that we've made with the state. Um, but again, we've been communicating with them uh, regularly. Um, to ensure uh, that we are um. Making progress. And then this, uh, you know, we've been working hard um, since Saturday, um, to really. Provide the best information possible, um, so we just, um, earlier this. Day, um, uploaded uh, frequently asked questions based on a number of questions that came to us, whether it was through email. Through text, uh, through the workshop, um, so we encourage um, you, we encourage. Um, you know, sharing of the information that's on our website. Um, to really help us have this informed dialogue um, with the community. And with that, I will turn it back over to Chair Freeman.
Brian, thank you for that, and thank you Helen and Rajiv. Um, Brian, I was just wondering, somebody just suggested, and I was already thinking of asking you this. What is the best way for people to reach out with their comments, if you could just give it now, you might give it later, but. If you could just tell them either the email address to send to, or the website that you want them to go to and upload their comments, so we'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Chair, um, we get, if you upload comments directly to the website. Um, that goes directly into our inbox. Um. And again, um, I think another opportunity as well, um, is the survey, so we have a survey that's closing on the twenty-third. Um, again, you can find that survey on our website, sdc-specific-plan.com.
And for those of you critical of the uh. Of the survey, please know that you can make your comments directly, so thanks for that, Brian, appreciate it. Um, before we go on from this, I would like to once again ask uh, Karina Garcia to make the announcement on how to access the translation, please.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Para las personas que están conectados y desean escuchar esta reunión en español, por favor. Accesar el icono de interpretación, que es un globo en la parte derecha. En la parte baja de su computadora. Hagan clic y elijan español, y al momento de hacer comentario público, si desea hacer un comentario, por favor de utilizar. La aplicación de levantar mano, y si lo otorgará el permiso para hacer su comentario, muchas gracias, thank you, Chair Freeman.
Gracias, Karina. Um. So at this point, I would like to, um. Invite the North Sonoma Valley MAC Council member questions for the planning team, and I would ask that to be moderated by, um. I believe that would be. I'm sorry, Chris. Chair Dawson, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Freeman, um. So the role of the North Sonoma Valley Municipal Advisory Council, or the MAC, is to serve as the community's voice within county government. Um, we are the community on which this project will have the most impact. Um, as the Advisory Council's current chair, I would like to set a good foundation for the rest of the evening. Uh, if you're a member of the public, I welcome hearing from you during public comment. And at a minimum, you can say, I prefer alternative A, B, C. Or you can say, I prefer a fourth alternative. I'd like to acknowledge that the SDC is on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people. I'd also like to acknowledge that the place we're talking about is the home of salmon, mountain lions. Redwoods, hawks, and a myriad of other life forms. Is also a place that has been in the middle of and embraced by the Glen Ellen community for a hundred and fifty years. That community has been the home of people like David Bouverie. Otto and Ann Teller, George and Phyllis Elman. Jack London. Redwood Thompson. Christie Vreeland. And a host of others who have cared about this place. They knew it as a precious gift and passed that gift along to us. May we be worthy of their legacy. May we be worthy of all the May we be worthy of all the gifts this land has given us and will continue to give if we treat it with love and respect. I'd also like to acknowledge the deep connection that former developmental staff, uh developmental center staff, clients, and their families have with the site. Further, we need to keep in mind that what happens here will have impacts throughout the region. Finally, I acknowledge the tremendous effort put in by the community, beginning in twenty fifteen or even before, as well as county staff and the consultants leading up to this moment. I'd like to briefly quote from the two thousand nineteen Request for Proposals for Consultant Services to Prepare Specific Plan and Program E I R for the Sonoma Developmental Center Site. This document sets out the goals that the consultant who secured the contract, in this case, Diet and Batia, was expected to meet. Here's a quote, "A specific plan is needed to represent the community's vision and facilitate the site's redevelopment. The development articulated through the specific plan must be compatible in scale with the surrounding community and consistent with state, county, and community goals." With those goals, you would expect the community to be somewhat supportive of the alternatives. But here's the response as reported in the Kenwood Press on November fifteenth, quote, "The proposals submitted by the consultant and Sonoma County planning professionals have stirred growing dismay among housing development experts and conservationists, angered local members of the planning advisory group, and terrified neighbors with visions of a sprawling new city rising on the S D C campus." Now, I've talked to a lot of people, probably two hundred people, and from what I've heard, that's an accurate assessment. I've heard no support for any of the alternatives. So my question is, how did this go so far off track? And what are you able and willing to do to restore public trust in this specific plan process?
Chair Dawson, would you like me to address that now or?
Sure. Yeah, anybody, whoever wants to jump in, yeah.
Sure. Uh, thank you for that and a really beautiful introduction and just, uh, you know, really highlighting the importance of this specific planning process and how it, you know, can only happen with the support of the community. Um, and so we look for these types of opportunities um to really um truth check and gut check in some ways, um, you know, what we're putting out there. Um, and so we're, we acknowledge the information that, um, you know, we have seen the articles. Um, you know, we, you know, that this is what I spend, you know, the better part of my day really um speaking with uh constituents and hearing their concerns. Ultimately, um, you know, there's a, there's a balance that we we do want to strike. Um, yes, the community context is absolutely important. Um, this is also a, you know, once, potentially once in a up, uh, once in a lifetime opportunity to have that local uh planning discussion to help inform what the state will do with the property. Um, and so, you know, we take that charge very seriously as professional planners. Um, and so this is again, an opportunity for us to hear directly from constituents, from community leaders like yourself, um, to move forward with a better process. I think the fact that we're here, our consultants are here um to hear directly um is taking a step in the right direction.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, and I I don't want to say too much, but I just want to say that one of the the uh impressions in the community is that we have not been heard. We've been speaking for six or seven years, and we feel like this plan says that we have not been heard. So you just need to know that. We we feel unheard, unacknowledged, and unrespected. And, you know, maybe you're trying, I'm sure you are, but it's it's not, not being perceived that way. Uh, anybody else on the planning team? All right. Well, then I will move on to um calling on North Sonoma Valley uh MAC members. Um, our first uh council member who'd like to ask some questions is Councilmember Handron.
Sorry, trying to unmute myself. And now find my questions. Um, so the vision statement is clear that the primary, a primary goal of the plan is to promote affordable housing. And the plan identifies several housing types. It talks about affordable housing, workforce housing, market rate housing, and inclusionary housing. Can you define those housing types specifically? What's meant by workforce housing? Is that those that are employed on campus or within the local and community? And also, what is inclusionary houses, uh, inclusionary housing? Thanks.
I can go or Brian, do you want to go? Yeah, so let me first try to define the terms. Inclusionary housing is housing that we, the county, would require a developer to provide on the site. Uh, that is inclusionary housing. So that is typically income restricted housing, and that's what we call affordable housing. So you would need to meet the county's requirements for income levels for that household that'll be occupying that housing unit. And those income limits vary by the size of household, as a less by whether it's a very low or a low, you know, income uh qualification that you have. By workforce housing, we mean housing for those folks who may make more than those income requirements, but they may not be able to afford what may be the general prevailing market prices in the region, which are pretty high. So that, you know, you could be a, you know, a firefighter, but your income is going to exceed the minimum threshold to qualify for income restricted housing. So that's what we mean by uh workforce housing here. The financial analysis we have done assumes that we would require a minimum of twenty five percent for a developer to provide on, at the site. To the extent additional funding can be found, and there are new state initiatives for this as well, uh, Governor Newsom, for example, just launched an accelerated housing fund, which is a one point six billion dollar fund. There is cap and trade funding available from the state for affordable housing. To the extent that those those funding sources can be found, the numbers could be higher at the site. We cannot count on those numbers. And we would not impose that burden on the developer of the property, but there is space there for all of this housing to be that. But we need to be mindful that we need to provide a variety of housing types here so variety of people can qualify and not just those who may be below the income threshold. Hopefully, I answered your question.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the include, I only saw in the in the plan um market rate housing and inclusionary housing. Does the inclusionary housing include those categories of workforce and affordable? Or is it just affordable cow account?
Yeah, inclusionary is just affordable. And we've assumed that a certain portion of all of the different housing types would be affordable and not just multifamily. So the type of housing that would be at the site is either ranging at the lowest density is from small lot, one thousand eight hundred square foot lot, semi detached, which means two units touching each other, townhomes, and then multifamily. We're assuming that all of those types would have some affordability dimension to them, that it would not just be multifamily that would be affordable. You would have all of those different types be affordable equally. So twenty five percent of the single family, twenty five percent of the multifamily, and so on, would be affordable. And the remaining, what we call workforce housing, we are assuming would be non-income restricted or non-affordable housing. But clearly, this is not luxury housing if it's townhomes, you know, out there in that area.
Okay. Um, okay, so then the tables indicate that the market price homes contribute to the financial feasibility of project. What, uh, in what other ways is the cost of inclusionary housing offset with the plan? And how can you reduce the number of market rate houses and maintain financial feasibility?
We would have to, there are only two ways to do that. Either we would need to generate the revenue from within the project to optimize the land uses in it. Currently, we have office and research and development uses. Those are not money spinners out there for the project. But but the Board of Supervisors expressed a desire that at one time, we had three thousand two hundred jobs in the area, that we need to have some level of jobs, you know, at the site because we need to be training the next generation, have innovation and, you know, employment generating uses at the site. So the level of employment that we're hitting with these alternatives is still half of what used to be there. But still, the two revenue producing uses that we have at the site are market rate housing. And the market analysis also shows a good demand for a hotel, which could generate up to eighteen million dollars in positive revenue. So those are the two revenue generators for the site. So to the extent we can either reduce the level of office in R and D, historic, to build in historic, in in some of those historic buildings or nonhistoric existing buildings, especially for housing, is more expensive. And that's one of the reasons why alternative C is actually more revenue producing, less financially sound, because we're not reusing as many buildings. So to the extent we can use less existing buildings, focus our efforts in the key buildings, increase market rate housing, or increase hotel uses, would be revenue generated from within the site. Then we we need to look at revenue beyond the site itself. And and those are a variety of funding sources from the federal government to the state government. We need to continue seeking those, aiming for those. And hopefully, we'll, you know, we'll find some, but um that's going to take time. It's not going to be within the next year or even two years or whatever. There are multiple revenue streams. And to the extent those could be found, those could be applied to housing within the S D C site. And this county would bring in those revenues and apply them to to those projects here.
And to that point, um, it is something we're actively seeking, um, you know, at all levels, um, you know, starting from the federal level down to the state and to regional. Um, you know, it is a common, it is a very uh frequent concern um comment that we do here is, you know, at minimum, we need, we want, the community wants fifty percent of the housing stock to be affordable. Um, you know, I I think that's a um, that is a a very aspirational. I think it's, it's a wonderful thing that we would want to explore. But to Rajiv's point, um, you know, there needs to be some financial grounding into a consideration like that. And then ultimately, and this points back to some of the comments we made during the presentation, um, you know, this is our opportunity to inform the states um how they move forward with the disposition of the property. Um, you know, and one of those charges is to to make sure that it's, you know, what alternative that we do present is financially feasible. Um, you know, so I think to the extent that the comments and the ideas and the thoughts that are being generated, um, you know, focused on increasing uh affordable housing, uh decreasing density, um, you know, I I think there's also a really um important discussion to have on the financial implication, um, you know, of those thoughts.
Councilmember Handron, are you okay if we move on to the next council member? All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next, uh, Councilmember Cooper.
Please. Graham.
Okay.
Is there another, is there another specific plan of this size and density uh in the unincorporated, you know, in an unincorporated part of the county? To to look at and compare? Hello?
I was just waiting for you to to finish your comment there, uh, Councilman. Um, just to clarify, are you asking about a specific plan within Sonoma County that we could compare to or just?
Yes, in 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 unincorporated Sonoma County, yes, to compare, correct.
Yeah, currently, we do not have um that one for one comparison in Sonoma County, unincorporated Sonoma County.
Is there any that would compare to it, so are any available uh past?
Um, nothing comes to mind, um, but it's something that we'd be happy to take a look at.
Okay. Next question, we have two minutes, I think, right? Yeah. Uh, what is the ratio of anticipated cars per housing unit type? And where is that parking for those cars on the plan? Is it on the plan somewhere that shows? Okay.
Yeah, let me take a crack at that. I'm not, we have W Trans in our team that has looked at parking ratios. Um, we actually um use the Sonoma County Transportation Authority transportation model to be looking at that from that perspective. Um, so we have used certain factors. I don't, we can supply you the exact numbers that differ from for the various housing types. There are higher number of cars assumed for those single family in the townhomes as opposed to multifamily and even smaller numbers for the senior housing. But those are assumptions that we have followed, both the I T, which is the N C T R Transportation Engineers, um, requirements, as well as the Sonoma County Transportation Authority. The site has currently a lot of surface parking. Uh, and we have looked at other ways in which that parking can be enhanced. And in the drawings that we have, and we were not able to share all the drawings with you in this short presentation, but they're available in the report. We have shown parking areas that correspond to the amount of housing that's provided. And we do believe there is ample parking, as confirmed by our transportation planners as well, um, for all of the housing and all of the users that are being planned out there presently.
Okay, so one could look at the plan and identify the park plan?
Yeah, we can even tell you how many spaces are parked, you know, with the different alternatives. I'm not sure if the report itself has that number, but we did calculate those. And and another thing to keep in mind is that there are several new streets that are going to be put in to, you know, once we have new development out there. And those would also have parking on the street. And our our transportation engineer has emphasized that to the extent we can be sharing parking across users, because office users have parking requirements during the day and residential, for example, in the evening, we would need to provide less parking. But we have, we have accounted for that parking uh in all of the alternatives here.
Okay. Do I have time for one more or no?
Uh, sure. Yeah.
Okay. Um, given that development often be kind of begets further development in the future, um, kind of an open question, how long have the long, uh, how have the long range growth aspects of this, the alternative has been addressed? The long term impacts of future development of, that this would spawn? How have they been addressed?
I, I'm not fully following the question. This this plan will take a while to be realized. Uh, it will not happen tomorrow or within a couple of years. We do anticipate that it'll take ten plus years for all of this development to be realized at the site. It'll not be instantaneous. And um, and, you know, we certainly would be looking for all of the cumulative impacts. Um, you know, whether it's for transportation, air quality, greenhouse gases, or to the extent resources of the site itself will be impacted. And and a sort of a more thorough assessment of those environmental impacts will be done as part of the E I R. But we are very mindful of all of the cumulative impacts. So the, for example, the transportation analysis that you saw is the cumulative longer term impact that considers all of the traffic generated from the S D C site as well as elsewhere in the county. And it accounts for all of those long term impacts directly in that analysis. So we are, we are reflecting that in the analysis we are providing you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cooper. Um, now, uh, Councilmember Nardo Morgan.
Okay. Thank you, Arthur. Um, so, uh, Brian, I was really happy to hear that, um, hear you say that historic and the historic and cultural legacy of S D C is a priority. But I was really disappointed to know that the only way for this to happen is to have it be financed through um housing, which is quite dense or offset by developers. So my question is, um, have you not explored any other alternatives such as private philanthropy, grants, or the federal infrastructure bill? Um, have you looked at interim adaptive reuse as an answer to affordable housing? Uh, there must be some other creative and fiscal alternatives to, other than building thousands of houses on or hundreds of houses on the campus. on or hundreds of houses on the campus. What degree does funding need to be identified upfront to help restore these historic buildings? And is there an opportunity for groups to move forward seeking funding for future historic restoration and reuse?
You, councilmember, and I believe there is a proposal that was submitted by the Glen Allen Historical Society. You know, I would say we're, we want to be creative. I think we're open to, you know, new ways to fund. Having said that, I just, I guess I want to double down a little bit on a comment that Rajiv made in the presentation. You know, with the schedule and what the agreement with the state has allowed us to do. I mean, you know, you you point to the infrastructure bill and that's something that myself and colleagues, you know, are already starting to look through, not just for this project, but across the board. You know, how is that? How does the local funding that we are able to secure, you know, going to benefit Sonoma County? So that's something that we employ as part of our practice across the board. And, you know, anytime there is an opportunity, you know, we welcome any connections, you know, things that, you know, the community feels like we could follow up on any leads, you know, we're open to that. So long as it sort of keeps us on track in this process.
I would also quickly add that on page seventy-five of the alternatives report, we do mention certain other tools that can be utilized in the process in addition to state, for example, funding that might be out there. These include, for example, establishment of a committee facilities district and enhanced infrastructure financing district, for example, their property taxes. And in the case of a hotel, transient occupancy taxes that may be generated at the site can be applied for either infrastructure or historic preservation at the site should the county decide to, you know, establish such a district. There are also federal tax credits, for example, for historic, tax credits are available. Those could also be utilized. So there are a variety of other options available that would need to be, continue to need to be explored in the process.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have a, oh.
Go ahead.
Another question for Diya and Batia. This is a community-driven process and as a community, we of course support affordable housing and job security. What we don't support is the idea that housing, jobs, equity and economic growth are set against preserving history and the urgency of climate change and the health of the natural world. You said that these three alternatives both consider and protect our wildlife corridor. And in one alternative, you are even adding space to the corridor. These facts don't seem to add up here. A California state mandate came out in twenty fifteen and clearly stated that protecting the wildlife corridor, and I'm quoting, at SDC will require preventing further development. You're proposing to create close to and in some cases over a thousand homes and a resort. The high density of homes and businesses brings with it a number of problems that severely affect the health of the wildlife corridor and the surrounding community, including increased traffic, fencing, artificial lighting, removal of native plants, placement of invasive species through home and business landscaping, pesticides, runoff and debris from construction, and the arrival of pets and domestic animals. Our wildlife corridor is not just about habitat connectivity. It's the heart of our valley. It is our legacy for clean air and clean water. We've already stressed our ecological systems close to the breaking point. And if we compromise these last few wild places in Sonoma Valley, we will tip the scales toward a much bigger ecosystem collapse. It seems that you have not considered the impact of close to four thousand people and the resort, along with their cars, traffic and pets on our wildlife corridor, along with carbon emissions, climate change and the future of Sonoma Valley. Can you comment on why you chose chose such high density of housing that affects not only the wildlife corridor, but the future health and well-being of a small rural community?
Your, your points are all, you know, well made and well taken. First thing I would say is that all of the alternatives in terms of their overall development area are similar to what exists out there. They're not proposing an overall development area that is that much higher. And alternative A is actually lower building square footage than currently exists out there. And B and C are only marginally higher. Many of the buildings that exist out there are single-story buildings, especially all of the ones on the east side. So we are anticipating that our buildings will be occupying less building footprint, development footprint at the site than currently exists. So in a certain sense, we'll have less built-up area at the end of the day than what currently exists with the buildings. We are doing our best to give back to the creek corridors. Many of the buildings are actually existing buildings closer to the creek. We are, in instances where we're able to put in new buildings, we are setting those buildings further back from the creeks to give room for the wildlife to move through. There were three thousand two hundred or so, I forget, residents out there at the time. And there was a significant number of jobs out there as well. So the daytime population that we're looking at is not sort of dramatically higher than what exists existed out there. Yes, there will be impacts, but one of the things to remember is that we have a charge. It's a balancing act between a variety of drivers at the site. Wildlife preservation is a, is a key concern and it's been a driver for us. We are also are mindful of the state legislation that asks us to prioritize housing and affordable housing at the site. That is another driver. Financial feasibility is yet another driver, you know, for us. And when we look at the greenhouse gas emissions and transportation, we have to look at the totality of the cumulative impacts. And we will be doing that as part of the environmental analysis to say if the housing is not here and it's in some other part of Sonoma County, well, what does that do to the, to the GAG emissions? So that is something we definitely will be delving deeper into. So, so your your concerns are are, you know, are are good. They're, they're well made. And I think we'll need to continue to also reflect those concerns at a, at a deeper a deeper scale as these buildings are designed, in terms of how they're designed, how they relate to wildlife. We've also had some consultation with the biologist in our team in terms of what the accessibility to the creekside corridors might be. Should they be lit? Should they not be lit? Should we go dark? What kind of building should be along these creekside corridors? What kind of requirements would be placed on these buildings that are adjacent to the creekside corridors and other wildlife corridors? And so there will be a series, a further series of development of these policies that will happen when we get down to that level of policymaking that you have not seen yet. Brian, do you want to say anything?
Just to, well said, I would just add, no one's seen it because we haven't created said policies. So this, again, this is a multi-step process to get us there, you know, to Rajiv's point. We hear the concerns. And I I think we will have that opportunity to craft those policies that are important to the community in the specific plan process.
Right, councilmember Nardo Morgan, any, you're okay if we move on to the next person?
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, councilmember Das.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Dawson. Chairman, I noticed that Susan O'Royd had some housing questions on my list. And before we go any further into emergency preparedness.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, councilmember Oldra, somehow I missed.
Well.
Sorry.
Thank you. No problem. I'm going to ask the question. A lot of my questions have been covered by previous questions. But I wanted to ask about the environmental, Sequoia environmental reviews for certain projects, including housing developments. And this is talked about on page six of the alternatives report. I'm wondering what kind of planned exemptions are made available? And if you're planning to take advantage of them?
Let me speak to that. I'm not sure what exactly the page six, you know, says. There are certain exemptions under state law available from Sequoia for housing projects. Is that what the reference is to? We are planning on doing a full program environmental impact report on the, all of the development that will happen at the site. So we will be looking at all of the housing that will be in there. We're not sort of exempting that from any kind of environmental review process. So full EIR will be prepared. That'll address all of the topics. You know, with the potential exception of maybe mineral resources, because we are not like mining, you know, quarry or some minerals over here. But otherwise, I do anticipate all of the other Sequoia topics to be fully addressed in the EIR. And we will be launching that process shortly. A notice of preparation will be sent out soon to everyone to comment on the scope and content of the EIR. And we, we are hoping to address all of the impacts, including the housing in the EIR area.
And councilmember Oldra, another question?
Yeah, the other question was kind of a detail of the high density develop. What kind of housing density bonuses are you, were you talking about previously? And are those going to be applied to the density of this project?
Yeah, so, you know, that's a very, very good question because the state allows certain density bonuses, you know, for affordable housing and so on, on top of a base development that, you know, is someone allowed to develop as a right. So we haven't developed the policies. We haven't written those policies out. What you see in front of you is an expression of what the overall development could look like. We'll have to work backwards to make sure that the policies as written lead to that kind of development. So that that written policy work has not been done yet, but it's a very, very, very good observation on your part, councilmember Oldra.
All right. Councilmember Oldra, okay, if we move on or do you?
Yep, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And next, councilmember Das.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Dawson. And I want to thank Rajiv, Batia and Brian O. Thank you very much for being here with us. My questions have to do with emergency preparedness and some traffic and one little brief one around jobs. In regards to alternative B, it mentions the creation of an additional vehicle connection from SDC to Highway twelve. Is this new connection limited to alternative B or can it be included in the other alternatives? And if it can be, or even if it can't be, has there been discussion with Caltrans in regards to the entrance or the, where it would join Highway twelve? Has that been discussed with Caltrans?
Let me just respond to, it'll work for, you know, A and, alternatives A and C are. We, I specifically asked the question of our traffic consultant, W Trans, and they said, yes, while it has only been included in B, it'll definitely help both A and C as well, both for normal traffic flow as well as for emergency evacuation. So it, it represents a good idea for us to include in a preferred plan. There are some existing, there is an existing private road, for example, out there that reaches almost from Arnold Drive to Highway twelve. I am not aware of a discussion directly, you know, with Caltrans, but it's, it could be that alignment. It could be another alignment close to it, but but that did, we already have that road into the extent the county and that property owner can work together to further extend that. It may be the interest of both parties. And I'm not sure to what extent discussions have taken place with Caltrans or other parties. Brian, maybe you can answer that question.
Sure. Thank you, councilman. No definitive discussions regarding a connection to Highway twelve. At this point, I mean, it's, it's really, it's, yes, there's alternative A, there's alternative B, alternative C. There is in some ways some, some mixing and matching. So to Rajiv's point, it could potentially, I think the big question is, is that a community interest and need to ultimately, ultimately make it to the preferred alternative? And so, once we can answer that question, I think then we would start to have that conversation with Caltrans.
I think my interest has to do with fire evacuation and how people move out of the valley. And another alternative to get to Highway twelve. I'm not sure any of the alternatives appeal to very many folks, but certainly to me, I would be interested in knowing more about A, B and C or other having that alternative in there. Moving on to alternative C, who decides which innovative companies are able to locate in the designated areas in alternative C? How's that determined? Is there an agency? Is there, how do, how do we make a decision on which companies get to locate in these new innovative buildings?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, really at this point, that we don't, do not have a firm or, you know, sort of a field in mind. You know, this is in response to a number of community members identifying a need for said use. So the, the fact that we do want for these higher quality jobs and sort of this pathway, right, we've, Sue Rozikorn had helped facilitate a discussion with a lot of the education leaders within Sonoma Valley. And, you know, one point that they really stressed that this site could help be part of the solution is this pathway for our young people from high school through to professional, to their professional careers. And so I think it's, at this point, it's really the idea, the use that is something that's been identified by members of the community. And so that, that's why you see it there. But at this point, I mean, there isn't there isn't a firm or track that would sit.
Okay, my last question, I'm associated with the Kenwood Fire District on their board. And and I'm curious to know, has there been any discussion by your consultants or Sonoma permit, permit, Sonoma with Calfire regarding this project?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, we've been working sort of internally with our, with our local chief. I'm at the local level. I don't believe we've had direct sort of planning efforts with Calfire. But, you know, open to to some feedback here, councilman.
Are you, are you talking about Chief Baker with the Sonoma Fire District?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you, councilmember Das. And now, councilmember Eagles.
Thank you, Chair Dawson. Hello, everybody. I have a couple of traffic questions. I'll try to keep it brief. So, so Rajiv, Batia spoke earlier about a chart on page sixty-four of the alternatives report that looks at level of service for valley roadways. I understand level of service won't be used in environmental impact, but assuming it does have some relevance here, it's in the, it's in the report. It looks like, it looks at roadway factors. Most importantly, traffic volumes is how I understand it, congestion intensity. And the LOS scores range from A to F, F being the worst. So two measured areas, and I know this was mentioned, but I want to really kind of dig into it a bit more. One, two of the measured areas on, on, in the chart on page sixty-four, Highway twelve between Boys Boulevard and Verano Avenue and Arnold Drive between Verano and Petaluma, both go from poor scores right now of, of E or D, a level of service E or D, to F for all three of the alternatives. And I've seen F in reports described as frequent drops in speed to nearly zero miles per hour, travel times unpredictable. And I'm going to sort of hone in on the boys section. According to the report, the segment of, of twelve between Boys Boulevard and Verano Avenue passes through the Springs community, serving as their main street and has high level of pedestrian and bicycle activity, as well as vehicular movements to and from side streets. So I guess my question is, doesn't this indicate that all of the alternatives are likely higher in density or larger in scale than the Sonoma Valley road infrastructure can appropriately tolerate? Sort of put another way, why is this not a cautionary barometer? Why is this measurement and there's these F scores? What does F mean if, if not that we've gone too far? Can I get an answer to that one, please?
I'm sorry, let me unmute myself. A, you know, I'm not the traffic guy on, on sort of like this charge. We have W Trans doing that. So I'll try to do my best to respond to that, which is that that the three alternatives do look at a variety of housing and job mixes. In that specific segment, Highway twelve, which is from Boys Boulevard to Verano Avenue, all three alternatives perform similarly. They're, they're all F. They're, it's currently operating at. They're they're all F. They're it's currently operating at LOS E. And as you can see, the county standard for that is LOS F for that segment. And that represents the accumulation of the different factors that the counties looked at that will ultimately contribute to congestion in that segment. So on page sixty four, where the standard for that item number two is LOS F for that segment. And that represents the cumulative nature of the traffic impacts. Because that segment is handling traffic not just from STC, but many other sources. They're they're literally, you know, going down, up and down Highway 12 regardless of the connection to STC. So traffic is a complicated kind of an equation. In many instances, this is regional trip making that's happening, that's not as affected necessarily by what happens at the STC site. And and there are many locations of the county that are congested. So it's a matter of what's, you know, what's the best location for actually some of these activities? Because regardless of where growth goes, it's going to have some level of localized impacts undoubtedly. What our analysis in the ER will focus on ultimately is also the cumulative overall impacts. And what STC does to the overall vehicle miles traveled on a per capita basis and the GAG emissions at a more cumulative sub regional scale. But we will continue to look look at all of these different areas. And if there are indeed ways of making some improvements on some of these connections so that we don't, you know, result in congestion where we can avoid it, yeah.
Yeah, and to to that note, just we are counterparts in the traffic world at the county level, Transportation Public Works Department. It is something that, you know, again, we've identified, I mean, across the board, where there's ways and places and solutions for traffic safety, you know, those are things that we would absolutely want to explore as part of this process. And you mentioned the safety concerns with people walking and biking as important for the Springs community. I mean, that's something that echoes, you know, our sentiments as well.
Okay.
Councilperson Eagles, the second question?
Yes, thank you. I do believe the two sections I mentioned are now D and F. So all three, I think they're now D and F, so they would all worsen under all three alternatives in the Springs and along Arnold. Just to be clear, I'm pretty sure that's correct. Yeah, my other question is, so looking at the assumptions in the report about a number of trips. So the 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 calculations sort of use aging baseline data, you know, STC is not is not the it's not strictly relevant to what will be on the sites moving forward, right? In terms of the due to the nature of its operation and the fact that it's been in wind down enclosure mode for recent years. So I'm a little unclear. It would be great to have a little bit more transparency over time on the assumptions around around the baseline data for number of trips. Also, any assumptions behind how many trips per household, number of people per household and commercial trips? There's not a lot of information in the report right now. What are the assumptions for goods and service trucks, recreational trips, hotel guest trips, etc.? So that to me, along these lines, and it's really important to understand if the valley infrastructure, the whole valley can support this this level of development, it's really important that we we understand some of the assumptions here and right now. And please feel free to comment, or maybe there's a time that we'll see more more transparency on this, but I don't see it in the alternatives report right now. A lot of clarity on what's assumed. Thank you.
So, yeah, it's two, two quick observations, maybe not totally directly, you know, in response to your question. A, we are following the SCTA, actually, the Sonoma County Transportation Authority ran the model for us. We didn't run the model. So they use the standard assumptions that they use for in terms of trip making that happens out of the different building square footages that we provide them. So these are the standard metrics that they use across Sonoma County. So they ran the model, we didn't run the model for them. We interpreted the results, our team used that. Secondly, I know this question has come up before that, well, do we have the baseline traffic from the STC correct? Because, you know, it's not functioning right now. It used to function previously and so on. And if you're starting with a low number, we are representing a lower future number. I want to correct that misperception out there. The only reason we have presented the existing in the baseline information is to provide a historical perspective. But when the traffic itself is run, they are looking, they're not, it's not reflecting the baseline conditions that used to prevail, you know, ten years ago or something like that. That's that's separate from that. The county model is run separately. So this is just by a historic, you know, context information. It's unrelated to the sort of the future traffic that will be out there. So if you miscounted two hundred trips, you know, from ten years ago, it doesn't change the the future traffic that we are representing at the site. There's just two, people wanted to know from us, what was it, you know, at the time, and we did our best to come up with an answer, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Eagles. And now, thanks for everyone's patience. Our last North Sonoma Valley MAC Councilmember, Councilmember Newhauser.
Thank you, Chair Dawson. Yes, I I listening to the comments by all of our representatives with the county and consultant. It's making me realize that that the real issue here is based on what Brian said very early in this process, and that is the trauma that people have experienced. And I think that it's what came out of the trauma from the past fires and flooding in this community that has raised our awareness of our limited resources and the risks that we face through increased development and or unwise development. So I think there's a great sensitivity here in the community to these issues. A lot of the traffic has been, as questions have been answered, but there's an aspect of this that I would like to address. And we know that these traffic conditions will worsen. And from a public safety or a disaster risk perspective, we're wondering if the standards are changing or if they should change on how we view traffic levels. One of the greatest risks to our community right now is our ability to evacuate during a disaster. And we know that in both two thousand seventeen and in two thousand nineteen that evacuation routes were either cut off or traffic was snarled and people were put at risk. So I guess the question is, what should the maximum peak load be to maintain public safety during a crisis? And what infrastructure improvements will need to be made to keep STC redevelopment impacts below that threshold?
Councilman, thank you for that comment. Nice to see you again. I, that that is a very good question. When I think about, I mean, if if that is a, I mean, I think about all the constraints and all the things that are important that go into a planning effort. You know, especially with this site specific context of Sonoma Valley. The history, the recent history. You know, that I would imagine is at the top of the list. And so I, you know, would want to confer with our consultants on what to what degree, you know, that is something we would be looking at as far as the impact report. I can say from a county level, you know, when we work with our Department of Emergency Management, you know, and their sort of recent efforts to have a cultural competency plan and, you know, really focus on how best to to get people safely out of their homes in the event of a disaster. You know, these are things that we are exploring. These are things that we are putting plans and implementing, not just for this site, but across the board for the county. And so, you know, I don't have a great answer for you right now, a sort of technical, what's that maximum load should be beyond, you know, stating that, you know, the county should be prepared, we should be able to put forth a plan. And we'll work closely with our emergency management department counterparts, you know, to help answer that question.
So let me also add to that very quickly, that appendix G of the Sequoia guidelines, which has different topics for EIR's added wildfire risk to that list. So starting in twenty nineteen, we are required to address that as part of EIR's. So the very specific topic that you mentioned will be looked at as part of the ER, what the wildfire risk is, what what evacuation conditions may exist and what we need to be done to mitigate that risk or what the evacuation, you know, capacity might be. That's something that would have to be addressed in the ER that we'll be doing.
But I think the point is, is that right now, as you mentioned, the standard is F. And I'm questioning, and I think the whole community is questioning whether or not that standard is acceptable now that we live in this climate induced disaster environment in this, the twenty first century ills that we are facing now. To build on that, we also, you know, we have this other issues, as you may know, we have flooding and and the oh, oh, five, oh, six was a major flood based on these atmospheric rivers. We had another one that just hit us over nine inches of rain in Glen Allen in in twenty four hours. Flooding is predicted to increase due to climate change. Further hardening of the landscape with residential development STC will also contribute to flooding. What will be done to mitigate stormwater runoff from new and remodel development at STC and has stream channel widening and floodplain reestablishment been considered been considered to alleviate flooding?
So let me first actually just quickly clarify that the traffic level of service numbers that you're looking at there refer to a peak hour condition, whether it's AM or PM and picking sort of the worst at that traffic time. It's not the prevailing condition throughout the day. So I just want to clarify that that's like a, you know, five PM on a certain, you know, weekday at that one specific hour time. It's not a general prevalence that it'll be LOS F. We have looked at flooding conditions within the STC site. And A, we're, you know, we're doing multiple things. We are expanding the creek side buffers, which will provide more ability for the water to, you know, flow down better into the creeks themselves. We have to, from a stormwater perspective, look at ways in which those, you know, we'll have to set aside certain areas within the site so the water can filter through those areas. And we have some numbers from a civil engineer in terms of what that acreage might be. I believe it's four or five acres or something like that, but I sort of sort of could be wrong about that. So we need to reflect that open space within our planning area so that the water flows through properly. And we do, it's sort of filtered through correctly. Also, in terms of how open spaces are designed and where we're locating development, we have looked carefully as to where the flooding areas are. And what you would notice is that in some of those places, we would try to utilize the recreational open space or otherwise to utilize those flood areas as opposed to be literally building on those. So we are very, very mindful of that. We'll be looking at the runoff and and the stormwater conditions in the future, but we are highly mindful of those areas. There are some small areas within STC that are prone to flooding. They're they're sort of literally small, but they are within the hundred year floodplain. And we are mindful of those.
And and I appreciate that, and I respect that that will be included, even though it wasn't shown specifically on the the plans. However, this is just like the traffic issue. Because we're expected to continue to get larger, heavier rainfalls in shorter periods of time due to climate change predictions. We are standards for rainwater retention are too low. And right now we are experiencing significant damage in our streams, our geography, our, you know, location within this county is very susceptible to this, these damages. And we need to look at revising that standard upwards so that more is captured and retained for a longer period of time. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Councilmember Newhauser. And I think the North Sonoma Valley Municipal Advisory Council has finished with their questions. And I'll turn it back to Chair Freeman.
Thank you, Chair Dawson, and thank you to your well informed and passionate fellow commissioners. I appreciate all of their due diligence. It's clear they've done their homework. So want to say thank you for that. I wanted to back up for just one moment, if I may, just to kind of inform the public of the process of the meeting here. It'll take two seconds, bear with me. Just so people are aware, the the cadence of the meeting is the presentation by the project applicant, questions by commissioners, then questions and comments from the public. At that point, don't expect a back and forth during that. This is to the public. We'll actually have responses by our presenters after you have spoken. It won't be in a back and forth manner. And then we'll go back to commissioners for comments. Just wanted to let you know, and the possibility does exist, just before we go to public comment, that we will be taking a five minute break because this is going to be a long meeting, and I just want to respect people's bladders. So at that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to the Springs MAC Chair, Mai Tae Iter.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to say a couple of thank yous. I'm really grateful to the public for hanging with us. Thank you for being here. It's an important topic, and we really appreciate you all staying with us. And then I also wanted to thank the interpreters. I know how exhausting it is to interpret every word that people speak. So thank you to them. And then I also wanted to say thank you to the county staff for putting this meeting together. You did a nice job of getting us all together and making this flow well. So thank you all. And I just, our Springs MAC is here, and I just quickly want to read what our mission statement is. The Springs Municipal Advisory Council represents the people of the Springs and Sonoma Valley as the voice of the community to the elected representatives. The Springs Municipal Advisory Council is committed to engage with all community members in a meaningful and inclusive ways to promote the health and well being of our community. So thank you to the Springs Municipal Advisory Council group for being here. And I just want to remind you how we run our meetings, that I'll collect the questions and then I'll pass it off to the to the presenters. We won't go back and forth. So I would suggest to the presenters that you help me keep track of the questions as we go through this. So we're going to try to condense the time a little bit. So thank you all. And we'll start with Council or Vice Chair Willet.
Hi, thank you to the county planners and the consultants that are working on this. You can tell that there's been a lot of time put into this, and I'll keep it brief. You know, the alternate that really pops out to me as having the best balance of jobs and housing is obviously C. You know, it's it's also, you know, the most profitable, it seems to be. It would be, and what makes it more profitable is what I would probably like to see more of. If we if we're able to add more contributing buildings to it and like the the programming that makes sense. So it just a comment on on B in that regard. For adaptive reuse, the the, you know, where we have adaptive reuses, if we use them as as offices or non residential uses, then then we get a better use out of them. And I think you got your analysis has shown that. And then I'd like to reiterate the 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 potential for the connection to Highway 12 and option B. And encourage you guys to to look at that and possibly maybe model in a theoretical connection. Maybe W Trans could just do that and have that as an option to to, because we we have key. We're divided east and west by the Sonoma Creek, and we have this series of bridges that the one by me dates from nineteen fifty something, it'll probably be next, but that that need to be replaced at periodic rates. And anytime that we can create another bridge between Arnold and and Highway 12 helps our whole traffic situation in this valley and the flexibility, and as others have said, with the emergency situation with the with the fires. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Ray. Councilmember Lombard?
Everyone's making great questions and comments. I wanted to say that and to thank you all for being here. I have a number of questions. One one, why isn't it a given that the area near the wildlife area will one, uh, why isn't it as a, a given that the area near the wildlife area will go dark? It's, it's really essential for, for a wildlife quarter to go dark at night. Um, I think this planning process has not considered the surrounding communities enough. And I also would like to have seen more discussion of, of, of transit being included in this. Uh, we, we certainly don't have, we have totally inadequate, uh, transit in, in the county. Uh, this would be an opportunity to plan a community that would include transit. I also wonder, seriously wonder why the housing has to support, support the historic buildings being preserved. I've looked, I've thought about this. The, the state of California was a bad landlord. They let this property fall into disrepair. And now we're being penalized for, for that. Um, developing, uh, good housing here is, is being penalized by the state's negligence. Um, I think that should be something that could, that was pointed out and could use, uh, for some, uh, create some pressure on them to provide more funding. Um, there, there was historically a firehouse, um, on the S T C property. Uh, and I am kind of wondering about at least having, um, a small, if with that development, it's a lot of houses. Uh, to, you know, or, or, um, buildings to not have some sort of fire protection there. Um, the Glen Ellen Fire Department is volunteer. So, no, not anymore. Okay, thanks.
There, there will be a, there will be a, a fire station out there at the campus. I'm not sure it'll be the same one or a new one, but I'm not, but, but there will be one apparently.
Okay. Um, I've, I've interspersed my notes all through here. Um, let's see. Where'd it go? Oh, um, also I'm wondering why, why would, um, why predetermine the business types that you, uh, expect to, uh, that you want in, into this, uh, community? You know, a nice idea is a gym, a hairdresser, cafes, restaurants. Um, but in, in a sense with a community, uh, the businesses that evolve organically are, reflect the needs of the community that's there. I'm also wondering if there will be, um, if there will be a determination that residents of, of the valley get first shot at, at living in this area. Um, and if we could, we have workforce, we have, uh, as you all know, members of the community who are not members of the community. Um, fire department, uh, uh, people, um, nurse, nurses, um, teachers who live, who travel far distances to work in the valley. If that workforce housing could be designated for people who actually have jobs in the valley, we could bring them back to the valley, which would be a great benefit to the community and it would mean, uh, a whole lot, uh, lower impact of, uh, environmental impact from their trips in to work. And it, uh, it just, that just makes sense to me. I, um, oh, also, will there be a provision to prohibit second homes and vacation rentals? And the other thing is actually, I kind of wonder why we can't turn this process on its head. Um, in a way Mark Newhouseier was referring to this. Why can't we turn it on its head? And in a sense, stand in the future and look back at what is created at this time. Um, and say, yes, this is what we wanted. We wanted this for the valley. We wanted it for the community. Um, and we've installed these, we, you know, we installed this vision in the plan. Yes, that's about it.
Thanks, Iris. Um, Avram?
Uh, yes. Uh, thank everybody for this meeting. It's, it's, it's been incredible so far and I really want to thank our colleagues at the North Valley Mac who were extremely insightful and answered, uh, or asked the questions I, I, I would have asked. Um, I, I guess first of all, um, Brian, you said that you, you're truly interested in the concerns of our community. And so far in the survey, um, alternatives A and B, uh, received virtually no support. Um, C received 21% report, 71% said other. I don't know how the report missed the concerns of the people in the community. So I would like to know why you think, um, the, the concerns of the people in the community were not addressed. Um, second of all, in terms of affordable housing, we keep talking about it and it's related to Iris's issue. Um, from my understanding, uh, affordable housing can't be designated for a certain segment of the population. It's got to be opened for the entire county. Uh, we're trying to solve our affordable housing problem in the valley. It seems to me that it doesn't solve our affordable housing problem. It solves the county of Sonoma's affordable housing problem. And, uh, because we cannot designate that housing. Lastly, uh, or actually it's two-pronged. One, has anybody looked at what happened at the Presidio? In terms of the development of the Presidio, I haven't heard anything about that. I mean, that somewhat of a similar project. And, and, and lastly, Brian, you said there is no similar project that it can be compared to in Sonoma County. Have you looked at any projects either throughout California or in other states where population has increased over 400% in a particular community? There's 794 people according, uh, to, uh, the census report in 2019. Uh, in, in Glen Allen. Uh, if you have even just a thousand units, we're looking at 2,000 to 3,000 new people coming into the, the community. That's a 400% increase. How can you say there aren't going to be substantial and significant impacts? I, I, I'm really curious about that. So those are my questions and I really thank you for being here and, and, and allowing us to voice our concerns.
Thank you. Um, Avram, Hannah?
Hi, everyone. Um, so I am maybe a little bit younger than some of the other people who've been talking tonight and I might have a very different viewpoint. Um, I'd like to start by reading from a State of California report about housing that said there were less than 80,000 housing starts a year from 2008 to 2018. But between the years of 1954 and 1989, there were over 200,000 housing starts a year. So it seems to me like development used to be okay and then something changed. So I guess my question is kind of, why aren't we looking at doing more housing here? It's a once in a lifetime chance. And I just know that housing costs have really affected a lot of people near me. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. So I'll try to summarize some of the questions and I'm hoping that the presenters were able to get some of them. Um, so there's questions about why can't the corridor be dark? So for wildlife, uh, want to be sure that you're considering transportation in the area. And I believe the answer, the question was answered about the fire, uh, house. Also, um, why are we preserving the, um, historic buildings? California should probably be kicking down some more money for that. And how come the businesses are being predetermined? And if this housing is to help solve our Sonoma Valley issue, why aren't we, um, making sure that that's what's happening? I think two or three people expressed that. We have firefighters, nurses and teachers who can't live here. Also, um, Avram brought up the point that 71%, 71% of the people who answered, um, want another option. So are you listening to that? And are you looking out at the Presidio and outside of California for other, other housing? And other developments? And again, this is not sol, we are, this is solving Sonoma County, not Sonoma Valley. And then, um, uh, Councilmember Perro said, uh, why aren't we building more houses? So that's, hopefully I captured everyone's questions.
Um, it's a lot of questions, Brian. Uh, shall I just quickly for the, for the quick ones, I would say corridors, you know, the wildlife corridors going dark. Yes, we're going to look into that. Transportation transit, yes, we'll continue looking for that and ways to enhance that. Comments well made. Are the businesses being predetermined? They're not being predetermined, the businesses. We are, hopefully we're creating, you know, white, you know, capturing a wide spectrum of businesses and the council member who said that, you know, you know, there would be organic growth of the businesses that can be accommodated. We sort of welcome that. I, I don't think it's possible for us to pre-select the businesses that may come about here, you know, over the next 10 years, you know, society will change, technology will change and businesses will change and we'll have new incubated businesses within the county itself. So I don't think we can predetermined those businesses. We need to allow for them to flourish at the site. The, the question made about 71% of the people, you know, had in the survey chosen other alternative, actually that reference was to, we had a quick poll during the workshop that we had. You know, as a, as a primer for people before they went into the breakout rooms at the, that Saturday workshop. So the survey results have not yet been compiled, actually have not seen the results, you know, the survey is not closed out yet. So the survey is open. We very much encourage people to take the survey. I think there were, um, points made about the affordable housing. It was pointed out that under federal laws, we cannot, you know, maybe might be able to restrict the occupancy to certain groups of people. So we need to be mindful of that as we talk about that. But I think in general, if there is a housing need in the valley and we're not filling it, it's going to exacerbate that need. So we need to provide the housing. Otherwise you're not going to, you know, have places for those firefighters and the nurses and so on to live here. And I, and I totally appreciate, uh, Councilmember Sparrow's point, you know, about, um, why can't there be more housing? Well, we, we, there can be more housing. There, there, at the initial time that we went to Pat, we had literally twice the number of housing units and the initial alternatives that we shared with the Pat. And, um, based on the feedback that we got from the planning advisory team that's guiding us, the numbers were, you know, turned, you know, torn down for those alternatives. So that's what I would say to that. So we're trying to find a middle ground here between what the committee wants, what the state will want from the site and how we can balance a variety of interests and perspectives. We are gathering input from a variety of sources. That workshop was one of those. Although Spanish workshop we had yesterday was another one and we'll continue to have the dialogue and report out the entirety of the input that we will get. And yes, Presidio was looked at in effect of the first two pad meetings that we had. It was brought up as one of the places for us to look at. It was discussed. It is somewhat very different, both from its structure in terms of who owns it. It's the federal government and they were willing to pump the money. It's also San Francisco, which is a, which is an entirely different marketplace than where we are with Sonoma County. Uh, Brian, you want to take on any?
Yes, and I, I hope I, um, do this justice, um, um, in some of the ones. I mean, I would say, I mean, when I started on this project, uh, Presidio, uh, the Buck Institute, I mean, there are examples that, uh, we have been, uh, looking at, um, have, uh, been referred to look at. I think, you know, so what, to what Rajiv, um, pointed to, I mean, it isn't a one for one comparison. Um, that said, I mean, you know, I, I think we're always looking at those local examples as, um, inspiration, um, ultimately for what we do with the site, uh, what we all do for the site. Um, I think just, just a general comment that I'll make, um, you know, the common theme throughout the comments and the questions. I mean, A, I think much of this, you know, may get addressed, um, you know, as we develop policies in the specific plan and, you know, that is going to be an open dialogue with the community. Um, and so, you know, we fully expect to have that discussion, um, with many, if not all of you. Um, you know, uh, at that point in time. Um, but I, I think what we can say is, um, you know, this, uh, there's a number of trade-offs. There's a number of priorities. There's a number of things that are important to the community. And oftentimes they're at odds with each other. Um, and that's something we recognize. Um, it's, you know, it's not an easy task that we have um, embarked on here. Um, but you know, to the best that we can hear from the community about the concerns. I mean, this is where, you know, um, I use this example of, um, you know, we presented A, B and C. Um, and I think, uh, one of the commenters, um, one of the council members mentioned, uh, you know, there's overwhelming support for another alternative. Um, you know, that's feedback that we want to take a look at. You know, ultimately that goes into, you know, us moving forward between now and, uh, to the workshop to the board. Um, ultimately what we want to recommend. Um, we don't want to, you know, put forth something that, um, is not responsive, um, to the needs of the community. Um, you know, and, and this question about more housing, I mean, there is absolutely, I mean, it's something that we, um, you know, uh, think about a lot. And I, I would say some of the constraints that we do have to consider are the, you know, not just the environmental constraints, um, with more housing. Uh, but also, I mean, I, I think the market study, which we do have on our website, you know, that really points to what the demand and what the, what the need could be or should be, um, uh, within Sonoma Valley. Um, so those are all things that we took into account ultimately to come up with these three proposals, um, with the unit counts. Um, but again, I mean, this isn't, there isn't one alternative where, you know, you have L O S, um, a perfect, uh, straight A, um, report card. I mean, that, that's just not where we're going to be unfortunately. Um, and there's trade-offs. I mean, there is a, a real need for housing and a lot, a mix of housing, workforce housing. Um, you know, these are all important things, but we can't plan that, uh, without considering the context of where we're at, um, within Sonoma Valley. And that's what, you know, we're hopeful to be, uh, making strides toward here.
And I would quickly add that all of the three, the housing numbers and the three alternatives are within the market demand that's been expressed through the market analysis. So there is more demand than even what is accommodated in these three alternatives in the valley based on the analysis we've done.
Thank you. I just want to make one final comment. I always look at things through the lens of equity and look for spaces for vulnerable populations. And I don't particularly see space for vulnerable populations in any of these plans. So, um, I, I'm asking you to take a look at that because our vulnerable folks will not find a place in this space. Um, thank you for your time, Mac. You rock. Thank you. Pass it back to Chair Freeman.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Terry. Um, thank you for your questions and, uh, before we go on, I just want to call out one more time to ask Karina Garcia to make an announcement for how to access the translation, if you wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Para las personas que desean escuchar esta reunión en español, pueden accesarla haciendo clic en el icono de interpretación o el globo que está en la parte derecha, la parte baja a la derecha de su pantalla. Hacen clic y seleccionen español o Spanish. Y cuando llegue el momento para el comentario público, por favor de utilizar la aplicación de levantar mano en su computadora, se le otorgará el permiso para hacer su comentario. Gracias.
And thank you. Um, so now I would turn to my Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission, Commission, Commissioners um, for questions. I am going to call on you each individually, ask your questions. Please keep in mind, um, what has gone before and try and be succinct. Thank you guys in advance. I'll first call on Commissioner Curley. Did he arrive? No, don't see him. So I will then go to Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Um, this has been very, very interesting and very, very productive. And I, I especially appreciate the insightful, intelligent, constructive questions from the, uh, the North, uh, Valley Mac and the folks from Glen Allen. I just did my I just did my own little research, and I wanted to find out how many households actually were in Glen Allen. And the best number I could come up with was 754. Now, that doesn't reflect total number of people, obviously. It just reflects dwellings. So that as I read the alternative proposals, the minimum proposal that's being presented is A, in terms of the number of houses that would be proposed to be constructed, and that's 990. So it's really hard for me to understand how the county, at least in their presentation here, would conclude that adding 990 households would have a minimal or no significant impact on traffic, either going through Glen Allen to connect on 12 or down Arnold to ultimately connect on 12 or go into Sonoma. And so I would like them to discuss how their assessment of the the lack of impact of doubling the population on the traffic. And consequently, the traffic has a direct impact, obviously, on ability of people to evacuate and the safety of the community in terms of fires that we all live live with. I seems to me, and this is an informative question, it seems to me that what we're looking for is a proposal that will fund the development of SDC in a way that is somewhat directed by the county in order to avoid the county, the property reverting, if you will, back to the state and the state making its autonomous determination about how the property should be used or developed. I really don't appreciate that kind of sort of threatening scare tactics that we see here. I've seen it on the FAQs. If we don't adopt one of these proposals or something near it, then we will have a Sun Microsystems, the same way that Sun Microsystems was able to purchase property at Agnew. I don't think that's productive in terms of a real meaningful discussion. And I'd like to hear. I'd like to hear a response to the question of why it seems that the specific plan here is being proposed or the alternatives of the specific plan are being proposed only for the purpose of being able to fund this project. And the notion that the county has a limitation on its ability to consider, to continue considering these issues as imposed by the state is something that seems to me specious. There's always negotiations that can go on between governmental entities. So can we get some more time, I guess, is really what my question is. And I just would indicate that I don't think that we should be threatened with a specter of Sun Microsystems moving into SDC as a way to motivate us to approve or support one of three, I think, very weak choices. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So I heard a few there. So I'll start at the top. You know, if we did misspeak, I I will own up to that. You know, at this point in the analysis, I mean, I can't say for certain. I don't believe I stated that there's no significant impact to traffic. You know, that's something that, you know, obviously, through the environmental impact report analysis, we can better assess. At this point, we sort of did this initial study, and that's what was presented before you today, based on the three alternatives. And then to your second point, you absolutely, you know, no intention of threats. I think it's, I think I, the intention is to simply state the fact that, you know, as part of the the partnership, the agreement that we do have with the state, which, again, we've been communicating regularly with. And, you know, in fact, next week is our next regular check in. You know, there are looking to extend the timeline. You know, they are, again, they have staff retire, renew, I think they call them, you know, really holding the place together. I mean, it's a really great group of members there that, you know, if you were to visit during the day, during the week, you know, you may come across them on site with maintenance. I mean, that, you know, this isn't a, I think we should all just be also aware that there's a real cost associated. And so up until the last time we, you know, communicated with the state, you know, at least the people that I have communication with on this project, you know, this is the time that we have, and it's something that, you know, we want to move forward and and put forth a good, solid plan. And so there was no, there's no intent. I think maybe that was an example of what happened in a different place. But you know, I would apologize if that's how that was taken.
I would also like to just point out that there is a greater population around the campus according to there's the Eldridge, for example, is a census designated place, which does not include the village of Glen Allen. That has a population of almost 1,500 people. It is 1,200 as part of the license, the census count. There were 3,700 clients at the site at SDC. There were 1,000 jobs at this place. So it's been a fairly active place historically, both for jobs in terms of traffic and elsewhere. We are totally mindful of, you know, the what you what constantly were brown, you said. But we also should recognize that the overall context of what this place was and how vital and vibrant it was and how many people worked there and be mindful of that, you know, as well.
Thank you. I will now turn to Commissioner Truistel.
Hi, thank you for all of this. It's a lot. Question number one, is there any way to extend the time for public comment? And my second question is, I think this is a $500 million project. How is it being financed? Is it being financed for the state of California? Is it being financed privately? And I guess those are my questions.
So to the first question, I'm sorry, can you repeat the first question again?
Public comment, I thought you said closes on the 28th of November. Is there any way to extend that?
At this point, I mean, that even with, that is essentially a month, more or less, from when we published the initial report. You know, any additional time added to that, it really puts us in a corner related to the board workshop. And so in order for us to stay on track, that was really the maximum amount of time that we could allot.
And I would add to the the second question related to who's financing was your right. I mean, it is a $500 million project. We believe it's the state's intent to ultimately transfer this to either one master developer or several master developers. And they're the ones who will pump in money in it and develop the site. The state could sell the land, the state could retain ownership of the land and and do long term leases. They go to 99 year leases and retain control, regularly control of the site. These are all options available to the state. And they have been eager to dispose of the property simply because the numbers are very, very high in terms of what it takes for them to maintain it and not let the property become a nuisance. Brian, you could correct me. I thought the number was like over $10 million a year just to maintain it from it not becoming a nuisance. So the state is spending a lot of money and they would, you know, rather dispose of it sooner than later is what they keep telling us, yeah.
Thank you.
I would add, Councilman, if there are additional questions that could help you produce a set of comments by the 20th, please feel free to reach out to me and be more than happy to set something up.
Commissioner Kokanen.
Thanks, Chair Freeman. Thanks, everyone, for a great meeting so far. And thank you, Mr. Batia and Mr. for answering our questions. I had a couple following on to the questions related to financing. So this could be for either Mr. or Mr. Batia. Of the the three alternatives that have been presented, and as the fourth other, which in the survey received majority votes, the preferred plan that would be presented at the beginning of next year, is it essentially one of the three alternatives, regardless of what showed up as these fourth options? It just seems a little fuzzy in terms of coming out of this public comment session, how decision making will be made and input taken in and how much of what's been developed and designed so far will vary. So just a little confused about that. And I'll pause, and I have a related question after that.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough to say. I mean, once we do want to get all input in before the 28th. And at that point, you know, we would take a really hard look at what the preferred alternative would be. I would, you know, suspect, you know, based on some of the comments that are coming in. You know, it's not just going to be a straight one for one, and it should be sort of the best of components of the three and other ideas that may be coming forth.
Okay.
This month.
Okay. So then hypothetically, if right now it seems like Alternative C has more of the votes, if you will, from a survey standpoint, if that ends up being the basis of whatever is proposed. Earlier in the meeting, Mr. Bachi commented about, you know, the amount of time and risk in securing funding for innovation centers. There was a comment about whether it might be federal support. I hope I didn't misunderstand, but I guess my question really relates to if Plan C has a bit more speculative nature of the kinds of facilities and opportunities that go into an innovation hub. What what's to happen if those funding sources don't materialize? So there's taken a much longer time horizon, a time horizon which probably take longer than state of California would care about evaluating. What happens with Plan C if if that proves to be infeasible? Does that mean even more housing? Does it mean a second hotel or a bigger hotel? Does it mean that there's a default that falls back to just pure commercial development? Rather than something that's a bit more aspirational in terms of local job creation, innovation hub, and that sort of thing? I just was a little concerned about the sort of fuzziness, if you will, around the the innovation piece. And I was wondering if you could speak to that.
I could take a crack at that. You are absolutely correct in your observation. If you were to, you know, we have some members of our planning advisory team who are developers. And to them, an easier, you know, thing is to do more housing or do more hotels than to be billing, building an innovation hub for which the market may not exist. So but we have, we had a brainstorming meeting with the board of supervisors. And I think they want to see job opportunities for the valley here. They want to see job incubation there. They want to see the good jobs here. So part of it is speculative, right? I mean, will these materialize in the future or not? And it all depends on how the policies are framed in the actual specific plan, which we have not written yet. Would certain amounts of housing, for example, be conditioned upon development of a certain square footage or attraction of certain users? Those are all very, very good and german policy questions that we haven't delved into here yet. But these are excellent questions. And I think we'll need to, once we have some kind of an overall sense of where the community, you know, and what the board tells us to do, how to then make that happen? You know, would be something we need to continue, continue to work at and not give an easy out to someone who may, you know, who may get the side of developer and may think it's a difficult thing to do. Let me turn it into more housing. How do we, how do we prevent that from happening? And how do we ensure at the end of the day that we do get the the end result that we all envisioned would be would be something to lead to tackle as part of writing the specific plan, you know?
Okay, thank you. And then one one last very sort of maybe more basic question. Did did any of the planning account for just sort of basic upgrades that will be required? And how this might affect outlying areas with regards to water, sewer, other utilities, and if there are follow on capacity upgrades that need to happen in the areas external to Eldridge? And then if if those are anticipated, are those part of this budgeting process? And what the developer would be accountable for funding into the valley? Does that have to be funded through local dollars? I just was curious if that may be a factor in any of this.
Yeah, very, very, very quickly, our sub council and B K of Engineers has looked at those issues. And if you Google, go to an appendix in the report, there is some detail on those in terms of water specifically. Even though a water treatment plant will not be required functionally at the site, it is a recommendation that the agencies are making that we have one in there, which will be helpful to the region in case there is an earthquake and aqueduct, something happens to that, or there is fire in the area to have that resiliency in the area. It is a recommendation that be refurbished the water treatment plant at the site. And and there will be more water available than just what the site needs. So in case there's a fire or some kind of a water emergency, the surrounding areas can benefit from the water that may be available from the site. And similarly, it'll be hooked up to the regional wastewater treatment system. And, you know, any developer will be responsible for the normal course of what the responsibility might be for developing these. So we are very seriously looking at all of those components in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to take one brief moment. And my tea pointed out very aptly that we should be thanking Lynn Marie for her minute taking. She does a very good job of taking care of all of us and making sure that we're accurately recorded. And so my take, thank you for pointing that out. I would now like to go on with my list on to Commissioner Mullen.
I would like to thank you both for some some really clear answers. It's it's nice to see that you actually have answers to what's been asked. And I have a few. One was you were talking about the property would transfer from the state to a developer. I was under the impression that originally was going to be transferred to the county and that the county would handle all that. Maybe that's changed. And then if an alternative is picked, will that, will the entire project still have to go through a normal permit process? Public input come before our council, et cetera, before they can actually start building things? And then obviously, if there was an overall contractor, they would have to keep all the property in working order for the 10 plus years it might take to build out. So those are a couple of my questions.
Gosh, I didn't know Brian wants to take on that, but I can just speak very broadly. If there is a specific plan and the state agrees that that is the specific plan that a developer would need to follow, then all of the permitting will need to happen and approvals through the county undoubtedly. But then they would adhere to the specific plan. And to the extent that somebody is literally following the specific plan, it'll be more a matter of implementing approvals as opposed to any changes to that. To the extent that the state may retain ownership of the site and lease out, but, you know, have ground leases, have long term leases, the state would control the regulatory nature of the uses that can happen out there. So the county may not have an input in terms of the uses that happen at the site. It all depends on how the state disposes of the property. I don't know if that answers the question or not, because the state does not have to abide by local zoning regulations. In effect, one of the governor's executive orders that Governor Newsom passed just about a year and a half ago, specifically relates to this issue, with their executive order says that housing is a crisis in California. And and if, you know, if local agencies drag their heels, you know, on things, then the I'm directing the state agencies to ground lease and and move, move along with the housing. I mean, that's in the, that is in the executive order from the governor, you know, in there. We don't know how the state will act. This is a very unique partnership, as Brian mentioned. We believe it's the only time actually the state has gone out to form a partnership with a local agency. So we can come up with a plan that everybody can be, you know, can be agreeable, agreeable with. So the state is watching what we're doing. We do show them what we're doing. They don't necessarily show us their cards in terms of, you know, where exactly they're headed with this. So I don't know, Brian may have more insight than I do, you know, and So I don't know, Brian may have more insight than I do, you know, in that process, yeah.
Sure, thanks for you. Councilman, I would just add to that. I mean, the process that they have laid out is typical of their disposition of the property, where they are, they being the Department of General Services, are the property owners. And so I think where may perhaps there may be the, where the county ends up coming in, you know, there's the discussion around, you know, who takes over the open space. And so we do, you know, there's a number of, you know, potential landing spots for the open space portion. But as far as, you know, sort of what their outlook is, I mean, they are starting the process as we speak now to start up a request for proposal, sort of walking them through from from now till the end of the calendar year, next calendar year, a disposition process to to attract bids. And so we won't be part of that process.
And would would you say that from the start that the state is giving you certain boxes that you've had to work within to put the plans together?
Yeah, absolutely. A great observation. I mean, I I'm hopeful that the presentation, you know, provided those boxes. But those are the only boxes, the sandbox, so to speak, that we have to work with. And that's what we've communicated, hopefully, accurately, both today, yesterday, and Saturday as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to turn now to Commissioner Pulverenti.
First of all, I would sincerely like to thank everyone who has done such thoughtful, has such thoughtful questions and also analyzed the material so thoroughly. One thing about coming in this order is that a couple of the questions I had have already been answered or presented. One being that I had a question for Brian. I was trying to understand from your slide what the disposition process was or is. I wanted you to elaborate a little bit about it, and then you just kind of addressed it briefly. You said that the county would not be involved in the disposition process. Is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. Okay, that that was the only question I had that was left, Tim, so.
Very good, thank you. I now turn to Commissioner Vella. I don't see her in her frame up. There she is, Commissioner Vella.
Sorry, I had to stand up. I I have a question about sort of this disposition process, but also the, so an alternative is chosen. The state puts it out for, puts out an RFP and a developer bids on it and and gets it. And the property goes over to the developer. Can that developer, is the developer constrained by the plan that they have bought? Or can the developer then go to the county when they're getting permits and and change things around?
Yeah, I mean, if there is a, if let's say hypothetically, the state sells it to a developer, right? And the developer owns the property, then the specific plan that we have developed comes into play. They have to comply with it. To the extent they comply with it, they can pull the building permits. If they want to make any changes to the plan itself, they have to go back to the County Board of Supervisors and seek up plan amendment for that. And then it's discretionary that the board may or may not, you know, give those amendments, yeah.
So it would be the board of supervisors and not necessarily the planning commission?
Well, it will go through the, through the normal protocol. It it may come to you first, for all I know. And then it may go to the planning commission and then go to the board of supervisors. But the ultimate authority is in the rest with the board in in that manner, in that, in that matter, yeah.
And then to to Brian's last point, the disposition of the, the developer is only buying the footprint of the project, the developable project, and not the entire 900 plus acres?
Right, so it so it's a complex subject, because they have pipe, pipes, water pipes that actually run through that open space area.
Yes.
And that's one of the reasons why the state is not able to dispose of the open space lands. It is, the question has come up, well, why can't you just give up the open space lands? They're going to be open spaces. Well, the reason is that the pipes go through that area. And until that issue is settled as to who is going to be responsible for maintaining either pipes, who's going to take over the responsibility for fire suppression, for maintaining the trails and all of those issues until they resolve? The city cannot sort of give it up. It's tied up to the built up area. So I think, I think we will need an overall plan before any pieces can really move from here, yeah.
So but the developer will not end up being in charge of that open space?
It depends on how the plan is going to be written, and the plan says it's going to be open space. I mean, they may be in charge, but they're charged beyond the ability to maintain it. I, you know, I mean, they cannot suddenly build housing in that area, because the plan is not going to allow them to build housing in the area. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Vella. I now turn to my vice chair, Commissioner Dickey.
Good morning, everybody. I also want to thank both the public and all the the panelists as well. It's a a complex set of discussions, and we've done pretty well so far. I would like to make one point before I ask my questions, just to comment on the historic use of SDC. The use of the site as a developmental center peaked nearly 40 to 50 years ago, at a time when people lived and commuted locally. And obviously, things have changed enormously since then, both in terms of traffic patterns and density. So I think the comparison is a bit disingenuous. You know, 50, 40 to 50 years of history does not make current density a comparison. I have a question regarding an informal PAT proposal that has been circulated. That proposal had approximately 500 homes as a foundation for its finding financial feasibility, which is nearly half the number of homes that all three of these plans propose. I'm wondering if you have seen that plan and you have any sort of, or that proposal? And you have any sort of reaction to it?
Well, we have seen the proposal. It's been presented to us. It's been discussed by the pad. If it's the same proposal that I wonder if you're referring to. We are not aware of any financial feasibility analysis that accompany that proposal, but I could be wrong about that, Brian. I mean, our analysis, you know, comes up with pretty significant costs that need to be reflected across different housing units and, you know, hotels and so on. But I, we have, we've seen like a drawing or drawings that show the plan. We haven't seen any sort of corresponding numbers that speak to that. So, Brian?
Yeah, just a general comment. I mean, I think there's a number of, you know, in Commissioner Dickey's words, informal proposals. You know, it's, these are proposals that we have reviewed extensively, you know, as part of the process. I mean, the, I realize that we're throwing the PAT word around a lot. That is the Director, Director Wick's Planning Advisory Team, which we have been communicating and working with throughout this process, oftentimes monthly in communication. So, you know, we're so grateful for their expertise. You know, it's a, it's a wide, it runs a wide spectrum of experts on that team. And so, I mean, I guess what I can say is, you know, just sort of echoing what Revive has commented on, which is, we've seen it. We've taken a look at it. And, you know, we appreciate the input that the PAT, the Planning Advisory Team has and will continue to provide.
And many of the ideas in that proposal are actually reflected and captured in the alternatives that you've seen here, even though the numbers have been not quite match up to that. But some of the intrinsic structural ideas.
Scale, just to interrupt. I mean, you know, I mean, we're talking about scale, right? I mean, that's, that's a pretty big difference. On to my second question. So, commercial space. My understanding was that there was a market study that was performed, and that market study indicated little demand for commercial real estate development. And yet you place a great deal of emphasis on that in your plans. And so why the sort of the contradiction between the data that the the market study indicated in your own proposal?
Yeah, so let's try to parse down as quickly as I can that commercial space. There is the stores and the, and the cafes and the drag cleaners and so on. Typically, that's a small quantity in all the proposals, and that's meant to provide services to the population that'll be out there. That's small in nature. I think you're probably referring more to the bigger number of the innovation hub and office and R and D users.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, right?
Probably, yes.
Yeah, so so those are more difficult uses to accomplish here in the valley, simply because the marketplace is more, you know, in in other places. But it's a pub, that would be a public policy objective for us to achieve in this area to support this job and incubation uses. Make this a center for innovation, entrepreneurship, have ability for the youth and other to be here. It's not a money spinner. In effect, you'll find developers will want to pull out of that and and not do that. But that would be something that may be desirable from a public policy perspective, even though it may not be a money spinner. So we'd have to, this plan will have to do both, generate the revenues for, 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 you know, generate the revenues that we need to be accomplishing those things that are desirable from a community perspective, even though they may not be the money spinners. And that's just one of those, you know, things out there. There are other community facilities in there as well that'll be entirely, you know, losers for a developer, you know, from a revenue perspective. But they'd be very, very desirable from a community perspective. So we need to balance the two, so the two can happen, yeah.
I suppose it depends on which part of the community in which you live. I live in Glen Allen. There's 65 acres for sale along 101 between Windsor and Santa Rosa. That would seem like a very good location for this type of development, rather than a rural place without the infrastructure to support it. But separate, separate comment. The use, the adaptive reuse. It seems like in your discussion tonight and previous discussions that I've, I've, you know, been a participant in, the the concept of adaptive reuse has been focused on the historical building that sits on the west side of the campus, which we know is a historic building. It's a landmark. But the other buildings that are more on the eastern side of the campus, based on the information that that I've had available to me, the structural engineers have done analysis of those buildings and been somewhat supportive of adaptive reuse. And particularly in light of the fact that local construction costs have probably doubled in the last three years, it seems like adaptive reuse would be quite of an attractive part of this project. And yet it's been rejected pretty much entirely by you and your team. Could you address that for me, please?
Yeah, I'll try to take a stab at that. First of all, the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, as we call them in our lingo, produced a letter of determination in terms of what qualifies as historic property or not. I I don't have the year in front of me, and maybe Helen, if you're listening to this, you can tell me what year. They've determined the year until which the historic significance of the place lies. And these buildings on the east side were after that cutoff date period. So they are not contributing buildings. We have two actual historic buildings on the campus. We have Sonoma House and you have the main building. The several other buildings on the western side are contributory buildings. So they contribute to the overall character, but in of themselves, they do not have that significance. Now, we would need to retain a preponderance of those contributing buildings if you want to maintain an overall district character. So you could lose that if you lose too many of those. From the previous analysis done by, you know, W R D team and their engineers on the, on the team, you have to remember that the buildings that we're talking about were not designed for housing in the traditional sense of how we think about housing today. So if we are to fix up those buildings, and then we need to redesign those buildings to be filling in with housing. So certain office uses are actually easier in those buildings, because you don't have to, you know, be dividing them and building new, you know, bathrooms and new locations and so on. So we just have to be mindful of that. So to the extent a building is not a contributing building, it's not contributing to historic character of the site, the question then becomes, do you want to spend more dollars, you know, retrofitting something that is not historic to begin with? And then not also achieving an end result? That may be something that a consumer or a person who lives in a housing unit may want. So the, you know, the specific plan could permit a developer to retain more if they can make it financially work, but not necessarily mandate that on them, to the extent a building is not a contributing building.
So just so that I'm clear, what you're suggesting is that the adaptive reuse of those, for instance, let's just take as an example, the one story buildings is based on a projection of what the consumer wants to live in as opposed to its actual potential use. And we're talking about residences. We're not, not spec, not discussing commercial uses. So is is that sort of the gist of it? That you don't think, or the, the, the guess is that the designs would not be useful in terms of what people would expect to be able to live in?
They they may be for certain kinds of housing. Okay, I mean, I don't take that to be en masse. If it's co-housing, to the extent some of the services are limited to certain portions like kitchens or bathrooms and so on, it might be feasible, right? But it just depends on what kind of housing it might be. SHIPO determined the period of significance to be 1889 to 1949. So any building that is constructed after 1949 is not a historically contributing building in their mind. Certain office buildings, some of the, you know, the modern buildings you see along the main lawn, the Frederickson Building and the P R C Building, the Post Office Building, they actually have useful life in them, but they're not historic structures, or they don't even look, you know, historic, so to say. So we just, we just need to maintain some flexibility, you know, for the developer as well as to how to handle some of those buildings, yeah.
I would also add, Commissioner Dickey, there's a, there's a limitation in the virtual walkthrough that's on the website. I think it gives you a little bit of a preview. I think what was really eye opening, and I've had the opportunity now a number of times to walk through the buildings. You know, I think back to a meeting, a tour that the advisory team did. And, you know, we were able to, we had the opportunity to go through, you know, a number of those buildings we weren't allowed to go through for safety reasons. But, you know, we did have an opportunity to take a look at, to your point, on the east of Arnold, some of those buildings. And so that, to me, was, you know, you mentioned this sort of informal planning advisory team proposal. I mean, you know, it's very similar in its assessment that, you know, in the trade off of preservation, preserving sort of the historic character on the west side and trying to address a number of the the tall order, quite frankly, that we have in redeveloping this site. You know, that's a hard, that that was a hard trade off to make. But ultimately, I mean, that's sort of where a lot of the analysis and a lot of the thought went to is, how do we maximize preservation of the historic character? While also meeting all these other objectives that we have with the state? And that's sort of what is in front of us. I think if there are comments that we should be looking at, you know, repurposing things on the east side of the campus, and those are things that, you know, we would love to hear from you on.
Well, it certainly plays a role in financial feasibility. I mean, that's been a a nature of this discussion from the very beginning. And yet it seems to have been, I don't know, not considered deeply. I don't know, not considered deeply enough. If we're talking about making a, a, a lower density project more financially, you know, feasible. And, uh, given the nature of new construction as opposed to, you know, reutilization, adaptive reuse is a nice word, nice phrase. The, I, I just think it should be more heavily considered. It, I mean, without question. Especially it reduces the density, right?
So I would encourage you to look at the appendix in, um, the financial analysis. We've actually literally gone through every building in there to see what the cost would be to adaptively reuse versus do a new. And, um, I encourage you to sort of look at that to see how the costs compare for, and they vary across, if you were to convert those residential versus office versus other uses. So we have actually combed through very systematically through those. So I encourage you to dig a little deeper in there as well.
Do you think that I have not?
I'm sure you have, but our conclusion was that for certain office and other R and D users, yes, you could reuse. Uh, and the, and the money may be less than to build a new, but for residential users, it's, it's difficult to do that, yeah.
Commissioner Freeman, thank you for my time.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, you've used it well, my fellow commissioner. I would now ask our esteemed Secretary Commissioner Spalding to take stage.
Thank you. I'll try to be very brief. I'm wondering when, when you will engage in a phasing plan for the build out. And I ask that in large part because I think the community will be more accepting of some ideas and some developments than others. And the phasing may need to take that acceptance into account.
Could you elaborate on what kind of a phasing would be more acceptable to the, from your perspective?
I have no idea. But the concern that we're hearing, uh, from some of our community members is no hotel, for example. And yet in reality, there has to be a hotel, uh, to pencil out. So at what point, another issue is traffic. As, as more building is done, there will be an effect of some sort on traffic. Um, what, what I believe is going to happen is the, the community will accommodate a lot of change as it's happening, as it grows over the years, that they can't really imagine accepting now. So how, I'm not proposing how you phase it, but I just think that may be part of, um, how we bring the community along to this development.
It's, it's hard for me to fathom that it's going to take anything less than ten to fifteen years for, you know, given the complexity of even removing a building is complicated, even if you don't, if you wanted it, because, you know, they, it may have asbestos or something else in it, you know. So just to remove these buildings can take a lot of time. So this is not going to happen overnight by any, you know, way, shape or form. I, I think some of the phasing would ultimately also need to, you know, would depend on the developer's strategy, right? Way to extend the infrastructure first, which are the easier, you know, places to, um, you know, do the development. So it's going to take a while. I don't have an answer for you on phasing, except that it's going to take a long time to build this out. It's not happening tomorrow or in just a few years. And I also want to point out the hotel is a small boutique hotel. It's like eighty to hundred and twenty rooms, which should be considered a very, very, you know, not a very small, but a small hotel in the general sense of the word. So, um, well, and if, if there's a desire for that hotel, for example, to be a vehicle for us to restore the main building, and that's where it goes, you can just imagine the time that's going to take to pull all the financing together for that and to gather all the pieces, right? I mean, it just could take years to, to do that, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallding. I'd like, we're going to be losing our interpreters at nine thirty, so I just wanted to take a break at the moment so that they, Karina can make an announcement concerning such.
Thank you, Chair Freeman. Oh, I lost myself. There we go. There I am. Um, en este momento les queremos avisar a la comunidad de habla hispana que los intérpretes se van a las nueve y media. Por lo tanto, el canal de español ya no será accesible a partir de las nueve y media. Pero si usted desea hacer un comentario en el momento adecuado, aún le podemos ayudar con interpretación. Yo haré lo mejor posible por ayudarles. Gracias. Thank you, Chair Freeman.
Gracias. At this point, I'd like to ask our ex officio commissioners if they would like to make any comments or questions. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to hold off because I, I, I'm sure the public is, is pretty tired of, uh, listening to to me and others. Yeah, I, I do, I do have a suggestion on the affordable housing side, but I'll, I'll wait till after, uh, the public comments and, and till you get around to closing up.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Branford.
Yeah, no, no additional praise for the presenters. That's been done to death. Um, I have no questions and I recommend Mr. Chair that you move to public comment as expeditiously as possible.
Well, I will make one question and myself. I'll be done then with our, our group and then we will go to the, we're going to take a five-minute break just before, um, and I'll let the public know, uh, a few ground rules right when we get back. But that said, um, my only comment is two things, just about the overall meeting, the fact that we have greater than fifty percent female participation in the commissions makes me very happy. I think that it just shows the diversity of our community and I'm very happy and proud about that. Secondly, I just wanted to point out along those lines, the fact that when referring to historic people earlier, we left out Charlem, Charme, Charmian London. We should be recognizing her contribution to the area as well. And then last but not least, it's just a question of whether anybody had looked at the Sommo Village and the model that they were using over in Roanoke Park for development, that high density, um, it was a one community that is, uh, just something that I thought somewhat had a, a really intensive use within a small area and whether you guys had considered that at all in anything that you were doing.
You're referring to the development in the south side of Roanoke Park, right? Where the former, you had, you had that facility.
Correct, the ex-adulant.
I, I have seen plans for that in the past. I've not seen it recently. Yeah. And I've actually been to that site and toured the site, yeah.
Okay. So any considerations that you might pick up from there?
All of, all of those are, all of the best ideas. And ultimately, when you come to the policy writing, those will be looked at, yeah.
Great. So now I will turn at this point, thank you to my fellow commissioners on the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission for such insightful questions. I'd like to open it for public comment. I want to ask the public to first raise your hand if you want to make a comment that will put you in line for a, a discussion. And we are going to take a five-minute break. It's nine thirty right now. I'm going to set an alarm and we will be back here exactly in five minutes and start that portion of the meeting and appreciate everybody's patience with that. I know we're going long, but I just think we need to give everybody a five-minute break and we'll be back and then the public can start asking their questions. Thanks so much. Phenomenal comments tonight. Thank you. I just copied something he just wrote. I believe we should be starting back now. Okay, welcome back to everybody and certainly to the public, and we really appreciate you hanging in there with us. We're here for you and very happy that many of you have asked to speak. I am going to ask for a few little ground rules here, if you'll bear with me. You will have ninety seconds, um, to state your question and/or your point. You may want to, if, if somebody has already said what you want to say, you can say, I agree with the person or the topic. Um, that's totally fine. Please use respectful language and avoid personal attacks. And if you have long comments, just please realize that you can always submit via email to Ariel. Well, we'll provide the, the link to you. Either in chat and that way you can, um, comment directly to her. However, at this point, we'd like to turn to the, uh, public for their comments. And again, ninety seconds each. Thank you so much.
Okay, um, first we have Stephanie. Um, Stephanie, um, you should see a prompt to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is Stephanie Picard Bowen. I'm with Generation Housing, where we advocate for more, more diverse and more affordable housing. It's important that we leverage this opportunity as best as we can. None of the proposed alternatives make a meaningful dent in our housing crisis and might even exacerbate the low-wage jobs to affordable housing ratio. All three proposals failed to meet the affordable ratios required by RINA. Moreover, Sonoma County has two-point-seven low-wage jobs per affordable housing unit. The city of Sonoma has five-point-five low-wage jobs to affordable units. Instead of improving this with better balance, some, these alternatives will likely exacerbate the problem. Market rate housing is not the only way to make this project sustainable. A recent McKinsey study confirms that affordable housing projects can significantly buoy local incomes and local tax revenue. Finally, this is a one-time opportunity to really plan a community. Housing policy not only created racial and income segregation, but maintains it. Planning for anything less than a fully integrated community is simply repeating shameful past wrongs. With the awareness we have now about the deep and generational inequities created by housing policy borne mostly by our communities of color, failing to leverage this opportunity to address these inequities would just fortify structural racism and classism. We respectfully ask you to return with alternatives that better address our affordable housing and equity needs. Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Nicholas. Nicholas, you should be able to unmute.
Hello there. My name is Nicholas Ray Johnson. I'm a third generation member of Glen Allen of Sonoma County. And first and foremost, thank you for hearing my comments. Now, being the, uh, son of a Vietnam veteran, um, I would really like for the future of S D C to be developed into a rehab facility for wounded veterans, for those that gave all, for our community and our country. And not only that, but that would, in, in my mind, just be best for not only our country, but for those that gave all. The development sounds great. Yes, we need housing here in California. But can we first address those that gave all for our country? I propose rehabilitation. I propose a place where veterans can actually recoup and develop their lives in a more sus- sustainable manner. I think all of us can agree on that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next up, we have Joan. Joan, you should be able to unmute. Joan, you, you are able to Joan, are you able to unmute?
Hi, no, I don't have a question. Sorry. I accidentally clicked raise hand.
Okay. Next up, we have Judith. Judith, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, my name is Judy T. Logan. I am with the Indigenous Environmental Network and a member of the Sonoma Valley Collaborative. I'm going to make a statement this evening. I'm also a telephonia native person. And so was a little off guard. Here I go. I am also a longtime Sonoma Valley resident and a grandmother. My sons have gone to school here. I have grandchildren who've gone to school here. I'm also a member of the collaborative, as I mentioned, the Sonoma Valley Collaborative, representing Indigenous perspectives. I'm speaking right now, though, for the Sonoma Valley Collaborative, which includes about 30 organizations from across Sonoma Valley's various communities. Sonoma Valley Collaborative brings these different interests together to advance a sustainable community that's economic vitality and equitable quality of life for everyone and a healthy environment. We've been paying a lot of attention, I know I have, to SDC because it offers a once in a generation opportunity to do all of these. The Sonoma Valley Collaborative members want a plan that benefits people who live here, our kids.
And I'm so sorry, Judith, but that does conclude the time. You are welcome to email those comments to me. And I'm going to ask one of my fellow admins, either Hannah or Karina, to put my email in the chat because that's just too much to manage right now. Please chat that to everyone and I can make sure that that gets to the commission. Next up, we have Wanda Smith. Wanda, you should be able to unmute.
Hi. I would like to know why wasn't a creative alternative considered that would create significant needed income but not increase impractical residential density and traffic during peak hours and other environmental issues? An alternative would be a university, international boarding school, and/or performing arts academic or sports institute and center. And appoint an incubator innovation center for R and D was tried in Roanoke Park and it was not financially successful. Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Tracy Salsita. Tracy, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm a resident of Glen Ellen and I'd like to say that three mandates were written into the legislation driving the SDC specific planning process, preservation of open space in the wildlife corridor, provision of affordable housing, and ensuring redevelopment is economically feasible. These three mandates have proven to be in direct conflict with each other. We've been forced to make uncomfortable choices, to prioritize in ways that create conflict. In the three alternatives developed by the county, the choice has been made to put economic feasibility first. Redevelopment is so painfully dense in all three proposals because an incoming developer will have to mitigate the infrastructure mess left by the state of California. The infrastructure money forthcoming from the feds, I believe, with the infrastructure money forthcoming from the feds, I believe upgrades should be paid for by the state and that the state should retain ownership of the property while a fourth alternative is generated. SDC at its best was a place where people live lightly on the land, where people check their ambitions and ignore their pocketbooks. It is by nature and by human design, beautiful, quiet, and healing. I would ask that county planners and consultants be directed to generate a fourth alternative that approaches redevelopment by replicating that light touch, placing as its priorities both the state's site's national natural values and housing that meets the needs of all people who live and work in the valley. If nothing else, that would give us all our real choice. I'm happy to help with this work in any way I can.
Okay, next up we have George. George, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you very much. I am in a butter to the state hospital property and I am, I have three words for everyone. Housing, housing, housing. Workforce housing, inclusionary housing, market rate housing. I am in favor of multifamily housing, apartments, mixed-use housing over commercial business space, single-family housing. One thing that I am also is that I am a gimby, yes, in my backyard, but I'm also a dimby, not in my backyard. I don't want to see a three-story townhouse row in my backyard. I would like to maintain my skyline that is that I bought into when I bought the property and I would like to see a proper thoughtful way to sequence housing through the campus that would emulate the neighborhood of Glen Ellen, which I live in, on Martin Street, which has also been renamed by Google Maps as Eldridge, which is a misnomer. The other concern is that I would like to see is already been spoken of, preserve and enhance the riparian corridors to the estuaries. I think this is all very important. Finally, fire protection. Think about the 2017 fires. I was personally involved with those in fighting them and would like to see some thought given to fire mitigation concerns beyond landscaping.
Okay, next up we have Bonnie. Bonnie, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So it seems that these alternatives make it necessary for the site to be developed, be development-driven. In other words, a certain density must be planned in order for people to have a good amount of affordable housing, lower density and features that benefit the public on this public land. So addressing financing by identifying different funding streams for these features that the community would like, the planning can look very different. Affordable housing nonprofits such as Mid Penn, Burbank, and Saha all do great projects and they all rely on six to eight different sources of funding, including private investors, banks, government funds, and philanthropy. They are time-tested, concrete plans for getting truly affordable housing. So infrastructure, you know, the WRT report said that infrastructure costs were about 100 million. Yet, if you read further on, it also states that half of that was for replacing the old steam plant and underground delivery system, which no one would do anyway. So the new technology of electric heat pumps, which supply heating and cooling, will be used to supply different individual buildings on this site so that cost is much lower than has been indicated. Okay, housing, adaptive reuse is not more expensive than new construction. We've proven that.
Okay, next we have Lisa. Lisa, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. This is, my name is Lisa G. Thompson. I want to see a fourth plan that reflects the unique nature of the SDC property, the special character of the valley, and responds to the urgency to be better that's called for in these times. We need a bold vision that centers the values of this region while also meeting the mandates. These plans don't meet those basic requirements. We have an opportunity to create a visionary development that will inspire other projects around the world with a mix of sorely needed affordable housing and jobs while foremost respecting and nestling itself into the existing local open space and providing an enhanced wildlife corridor. I don't think it's enough to keep the wildlife corridor's existing boundaries or to simply give them some extra padding. Why not enhance it significantly while we have the opportunity? So much rides on it. Adding many thousands of people and their cars in this area will be too many. I want to see fewer housing units that is called for in the three plans, more of them affordable, few if any, single-family homes and housing for seniors and developmentally disabled people. The residential areas in these plans look like suburbs that could be dropped anywhere in the world. Let's come up with a plan that's right for here.
Okay, next up we have Tom. Tom, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Tom Conlon. I live just
Oops, I'm really sorry. Let's try that again, Tom. You should be able to unmute now.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Tom Conlon. I live just north of the city limits of Sonoma and I have a certain amount of sympathy for the project team here. Because, I mean, is anyone willing to acknowledge that Sonoma County just doesn't do redevelopment well? I'd like that question answered and I offered the Shenate Hospital debacle as exhibit one. But I'm concerned that this project is quickly heading off the rails, so to speak, and likely to make Shenate look like a cakewalk. I'm concerned that D and B is actually still trying to defend this plan when it is really so out of compliance with our existing general plan, specifically policies LU 20 FF and LU 20 GG, which of course called for priority public uses on the site. And we know that that was really why the state was forced to negotiate with the county to create this whole specific planning process. We also know that the specific planning process must comply with the general plan. And I'll just add that no one would want to visit a hotel where the neighbors were so against it that they might make that experience very unpleasant. I just am very concerned that I don't see this, this team really being able to pull this project together and I hope that that can change in the next couple of weeks and longer if necessary. Thank you for consideration.
Okay, um, next up it says Herb's Foundation. You should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Ariel. It's Bruce Hart. I'm on my wrong Zoom, so forgive me. Just a couple, a couple of comments. One is that, that I think times have changed since the state conditions were set and I would urge the county and, and the team to take a leadership stand and, and really prioritize the guiding principles based on current conditions, whether it's availability of water, wildfire, a lot of the conditions that, that have changed since they, they set up the, the original plan. And Mr. Ho, thank you for your presentation. I would just say that the input that you were seeking is to gut check the plan to make, to see if it reflects the community. And with due respect, if the plan actually reflected what the community wanted, there wouldn't be so much adversity to there. And I think one area of frustration generally from the community is that a number of high priority items that the community has are being deferred to address IR process instead of doing now. Thank you very much and good job, team.
Okay, next we have Nick. Nick, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I so wanted to endorse a great product from this planning process to do what I can to help create goodwill for a great product. And with all due respect, none of these alternatives come close. They are terrible. But that's okay. We are moving on. We need to reduce scale and density. We want housing. We want housing for our vulnerable communities. We want housing for our disabled neighbors. We want real affordable housing. We want a multi-generational community. We can do all these, but at a much smaller scale. We need to redirect the energies of the planning team to start pursuing more creative funding streams. State funding. Arguably, the state created many of these infrastructure problems by letting the campus decay. Federal, state, and county funding. If the state and county pitch in, we can start to pursue private philanthropic money. Not to help a master developer's bottom line, but to help the community reduce the scale and density of any construction. Scale goes to almost all the problematic issues in these proposals. Please listen to the community. We need more public meetings and we need a fourth alternative that is community-driven. We can do this. Go to EldridgeForAll.com to gather community ideas.
Okay, next we have Meg Beeler. Meg, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you, everyone. I live a little south of Eldridge and I've been involved in this process for eight years. I basically want to address the housing density and scale, which many people have, have spoken about. We have an opportunity for sustainability and vision and we're not meeting that opportunity. We're in the midst, we've just finished listening to COP 2026 where government leaders from all over the world couldn't address climate change. And, and I feel like the, the limitations of old ways of doing things are replicated in this process as much as people, the county has and the consultants have tried to address it. So I just want to mention one thing about density. Last year, when the, the urban growth boundary in Sonoma was being renewed, a study was done. Sonoma itself could develop up to 1,300 housing units. The Springs could develop 700 housing units. That equals 2,000 housing units over the next 20 years. We don't need another 1,000 units in Glen Ellen, as many people have said. So what I've been thinking about is I've been listening to all the comments is in the 60s and 70s, how every study said, oh, we can have a shopping center. But they never looked beyond the, the single place to the whole region.
I'm so sorry. That does conclude the time. My email is in the chat and you can send your full comments there. Okay, next we have Nancy. Nancy, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm Nancy Kerwin. I, along with Meg Beeler, am on Sonoma Mountain Preservation. I'm going to make a couple of comments that are a little more practical. I support almost everything that everyone that preceded me said and I thank everybody for being here. One is what research data did the development group rely on for defining where the wildlife corridor is because it does not just lie north of the campus. It also permeates the campus itself. In fact, Dr. Martin's provided us with a letter and a series of maps that show that the mountain lions go right across campus on a regular basis. So not only will the wildlife corridor be impacted by the demolition, the construction, the noise, the traffic, the people, the buildings, fences, pets, but it may be stopped. You're talking about a 10-year process. I don't think you can interrupt a wildlife corridor for 10 years and expect it to continue with any kind of success. success. One, two, I want to address the issue of hotels. We have a lot of hotels and restaurants in Sonoma Valley. They cannot find enough workers to fill their positions. And the other question on there is that the hotel will bring money into the owners and maybe to the county and taxes, but it will not bring money into the workers who will not be able to afford to live in the community where they are working.
Okay, next we have Bean. Bean, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, I think a lot of people have addressed really well the size and scope and scale of this and the problems with it. I just wanted to focus on one small question. The 2017 wildfire and the more recent blast fire moved very rapidly down Sonoma Valley, sometimes moving faster than firefighters could actually move. At ti- at those times, it took hours to evacuate. We lost our house in 2017, and a lot of other people did in Glen Allen. Adding about fourth, and by the way, many buildings at SDC were lost also. Adding approximately four thousand more residents plus hundreds of workers and hotel residents is going to cause gridlock during the next evacuation as thousands try to flee for their lives down a single southbound lane on Arnold Drive. And it's only going to get worse as people merge onto Arnold from other areas south of SDC. It's a disaster waiting to happen. A worst disaster, really, is the way to think of it. I'm totally in favor of a fourth alternative that does not, that does not worsen the problem of fire evacuation. So my real question though is, how did you ever get to this point? With respect to the evacuation, what fire organization did you consult? And what data did you use? I don't see any evidence of it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up we have Lance. Lance, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to comment. I would like to say I'm a thirty-plus year resident of Glen Allen and for over fifteen years have been an employer of a small nonprofit which has struggled to keep people employed in Glen Allen. In fact, none of the others live here, nor have we been able to house interns in this area. So I very much support low-income housing. I've also pointed out, however, one thing that hasn't been noted is that California's Governor Newsom has issued approximately a year ago an executive order stating his commitment of the state agencies to work towards a comprehensive climate solution targeting thirty percent of nature protection by 2030. The order directs those state agencies to develop nature-based solutions to address climate change, which sequester carbon, create wildlife habitat, and benefit all Californians, especially those living in disadvantaged communities. I would suggest that this property is one that will very much address those concerns. And we need to hear more about how the state of California is working with amongst these agencies to address the wildlife corridor, expanded habitat, and the needs for climate mitigation. Thank you.
Okay, next up we have Claire. Claire, you should be able to unmute.
Hello. I'm Claire. I live in Boys Hot Springs. I wanted to comment that I think there's been a lot of really good exchange of ideas at this meeting and I would like to see more time in this phase of the project. And I wonder whether we can go back to the state and request extra time due to COVID. That's it.
Okay, and next up we have Stephen. Stephen, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah, hi, thanks. I guess my, my main issue I want to raise is just on water resources. I want to know, it was really a question I was hoping to get answered, but maybe I'll just get it answered at some point in the process, whether or not the planners here have made a determination that there's ample water resources on the existing site for all of these development alternatives without tapping further into the limited resources that are already available through the Valium and Water District or the Sonoma Water Aqueduct. So is this in balance? Is this project in balance with the existing water resources? And then another part of that is, is would that still be in balance if the, if there was no longer any diversions of water off of the Sonoma Creek, which is what the developmental center has been, has done throughout the years? And then the second part of the question is, on the sewage side of it, do we really have the resources with our existing sewage facilities in the valley for all of these additional flushes and so forth? Or maybe there's some alternatives onsite to solve some of that issue. Thanks.
Okay, and next up we have Sharon. Sharon, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm Sharon Church. I live on Marty Drive in Glen Allen. Local activism in the nineteen sixties stopped the Bodega Bay Nuclear Power Plant from being built two miles west of the San Andreas Fault. Thank goodness. In the nineteen nineties, a North Bay International Airport was proposed to be built on Highway Thirty Seven. Supervisor Mike Kearns believed the bayside area was best suited for restoration of wetlands habitat. That's happening now and no airport was built. Thank goodness. In the early two thousands, Great and Rancheria proposed a casino on an ecological jewel at the gateway to the Sonoma Valley. Local residents rallied with the Cows Not Casinos campaign. Residents and land use organizations prevailed and saved the land. Thank goodness. In 2021, Sonoma County residents, land use, and ecology organizations rejected three proposed SDC redevelopment alternatives and created a community-driven fourth alternative to protect the wildlife corridor, character and safety of the Sonoma Valley, and ecological health of the North Bay. This alternative became a model for visionary planning in the era of climate change. Thank goodness. That's all.
Okay, next we have Larry. Larry, you should be able to unmute.
Hello? Are you hearing me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, uh, my name is Larry Davis. I'm initiating a small study group to research these different proposals. He come up with the feasibility. My approach is to say we have a problem that's a big problem and a little problem of the difference between money and the quality of life. And it seems like these proposals are saying we have to give up a quality of life in order to somehow generate what you might consider to be feasible finances. So I think that maybe we can balance out and look at feasible finances and look at quality of life and reconsider the whole thing. But all of these proposals need work and we need the help of the county to get that work done. So I'm trying to invite you to go to Eldridge.com or EldridgeForAll.org and let me know if you want to collaborate with a group of us that are working diligently to come up with these cost factors and these quality of life factors. And we want to have quality of life, not only for the wildlife, but for the people in the valley. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Jim. Jim, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to make some comments on the process. I feel that this process is being zoomed through. And what I mean by zoom through is Zoom has got to be the, the worst tool imaginable to be dealing with an issue that is so important to all of us. It, it stunts the process. It doesn't allow us to really come together as a community. And in this whole process, there's only been one public meeting, which was held yesterday, and I applaud this, the, the county of Sonoma for, for doing that one meeting that was, you know, for our, our Latinx community. But that needs to be expanded. We need to have more community involvement and I'd like to also speak to the hundred and fourteen million dollar bill that the state of California left for us. If this was analogous to, to private industry creating superfund, we know where the responsibility would be, would be with the responsible party, you know, who created that. And in this case, it's the state of California. And so we need to come to, to some other, other alternatives. And I want to applaud the Sonoma Land Trust. I want to also applaud the Eldridge For All. And yes, we should be working with all these organizations to help. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Nancy. Nancy, you should be able to unmute.
Great. Um, I, my name is Nancy Padian and I'm a resident of Glen Allen. Recognizing the universal agreement to housing and development, my suggestion is to hone the vision and principles to two that should form the cornerstone of the project. Specifically, I suggest building the project on the existing given state mandates, natural systems, open space, wildlife corridor, and on the historical, cultural, and social legacy. These principles should be defined with specific, dynamic, measurable component parts that can be transparently assessed on an ongoing basis from inception, construction, and to the finished project, which means that we should define them now. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Leland. Leland, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. As of this point, the SDC alternatives A, B, and C portray the common planning fallacy of essentially offering best-case scenarios by minimizing and ignoring many harmful economic and environmental impacts to the community. We need to have a fourth alternative that truly reflects the values of the local communities of Glen Allen and Eldridge and preserves the rural cultural and historical attributes along with sound ecological stewardship. If any future uses should be implemented on the SDC site, they should limit housing to humanitarian purposes such as housing for at-risk youth and/or other needed health and human services that are primarily in the best interests of the local area. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Lori. Lori, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, I reject all three proposals by the county. I propose an altruistic re-envisioning of the SDC, one which would remain faithful to the legacy of care given there, a plan that would work for all of the people, not only for the wealthy. Given the strong emotional outcries of the community and the amount of wealth in the valley, an alternative method of financial support is needed to create a workable plan. The capitalistic model on which we have been operating no longer works for the majority of the people. Minimum wage workers can no longer afford to live in areas of for-profit growth. Without support, workers, enterprises that depend on them will collapse. We need to re-envision the economic engine into a model that works for the benefit of all. The SDC is a perfect starting point for Sonoma County to lead the way into a new worldview based on an altruistic vision. The nonprofits of the area are the ones who have conducted the studies and done the research on the site. We need to acknowledge the site's limitations and possibilities based on scientific, social, and economic research. I call on the wealthy to support a not-for-profit alternative for SDC. If we, the people, can purchase the property from the state as is, then we, the people, can create a place imagined by the people for the people. This is a cause worthy of your support. You can make a difference, not only in the surrounding community, but in the world at large as well. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Teresa. Teresa, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I've got some feedback. Can you hear me?
Yes, the, the feedback, do you turn, turn down your volume perhaps?
Okay.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, Teresa. I, I, I just muted you again. I'm gonna lower your hands. If you can figure that out, it sounds like you're having like that you have something on and then you're talking on speakerphone, like a radio. So if you can figure it out, please raise your hand again. Or you can write to my email, which is in the chat, and I will share your comments with the commission. Next up we have Charlie. Charlie, you should be able to unmute.
Okay. Can you hear me? My name is Charlie Estadio. I live down Arnold Drive next to Altamira School. I'm concerned about the, the, the number of housing starts that they have on the, on all the plans. You're, you know, our kids and our grandkids cannot afford to live here. And part of that is because of VRBO, Vacation Rentals, Picasso. People with second homes behind me on, off a railroad, the end of railroad. Well, a third of the homes are, are second homes from people that live in Silicon Valley, San Francisco. You're not going to solve the housing problem if these houses that are proposed are going to be going to be second homes and third homes and rentals. So I think we need to restrict these, these homes being sent, sold to people for second homes and rentals. And I also believe that we should have a first-time homebuyer program, set some houses aside so that the young kids can afford to buy a home and and live here, you know, if, if there's a way to restrict it or at least reserve some of these for, you know, valley residents. That would be good too.
I'm sorry, Charlie, that did conclude the time. Next up we have Joan. Joan, you should be able to unmute. Oh, and it, it looks like we might have an issue, John, with your version of Zoom. So please do email your comments. The email is in the chat. Or you could try calling in with the phone number on the agenda and you can unmute. Or you can raise your hand by, by pressing star nine on a phone. Okay, next up we have John. John, you should be able to unmute.
Good evening. My name's Sean McCall. I am the land acquisition director for Sonoma Land Trust. We're going to file very detailed comments over the next couple of days, but I just wanted to hit on a few points. First, the draft alternatives assume that the state of California must pass on the entire hundred million dollar infrastructure demolition and cleanup costs for SDC to an eventual buyer. This assumption of no additional responsibility, investment, or support from the state is driving redevelopment proposals that are not related to the actual environmental and site constraints for the property. We support a fourth alternative. And instead of trying to solve this hundred million dollar infrastructure cost problem by squeezing as many houses, hotel rooms, and commercial uses onto the property as possible, what we're going to propose and share with the, with the county and with all of you is a different approach, which would set environmental performance standards that are designed to support not only state goals for that are designed to support not only state goals for climate change, biodiversity protection, water and energy conservation, but also county goals in the general plan and specific goals for the Sonoma Valley Wildlife Corridor. So again, instead of trying to start with a unrealistic number of houses, let's start with performance standards that meet environmental goals and mandates. Thank you for your time, and we'll file written comments.
Okay, next up, we have Alice. Alice, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah, hi, I live in Glen Ellen for many years and uh listening to so many people speaking up tonight. Um I gotta say, I think we're gonna look back on November 1st, the day the alternatives dropped, as the day the bear was poked, the hornet's nest was kicked, the dragon was roused. Choose your metaphor. Um people here at the meeting tonight are, they're being very polite. On the ground, this community is outraged over the high-density housing proposed in the alternatives on less than 200 acres in the heart of Sonoma Valley and smack dab in the middle of the wildlife corridor. And I've said it before, I'll say it again. I mean, this is insane. As a community, we have been resolute from the very beginning that we intend to save our space, which encompasses the SDC's open space, the core campus, the wildlife corridor, the surrounding neighborhoods in Village of Glen Ellen, the entire valley from north to south. We are going to save all that we so cherish about living in this beautiful valley from overdevelopment, and that's overdevelopment with little regard for negative consequences impacting surrounding communities and the wildlife corridor. Um and I am encouraged and confident that this community will come together to create a well-balanced, fourth, lower-impact alternative of which we can really all be proud. Thank you so much.
Okay, um next we have Hallie. Hallina, I am sure I just butchered that. Uh you should be able to unmute.
No worries. That always gets everybody. Hi, I'm Hallina Derrickson, and I am also a lifelong resident of Glen Ellen. I'm sorry, I had a note here in front of me. Um I also work in Eldridge and I am a volunteer firefighter at the former Glen Ellen Fire Department. Um really, a lot of great points made by everybody. I could sit here and talk all night about everything that's been said. Um but I want to really specifically reiterate what people have said about the uh concerns about evacuation in case of wildfire. I'm sure any of you who were here on October the 2017 remember what it was like trying to get out, uh bumper-to-bumper gridlock traffic all the way to Sonoma. Um you know, we almost ran out of gas, and I I can't even imagine what that would be like uh with the kind of population increase that these alternatives would bring. So, yeah, I would like to see more time and thought put toward a a fourth option as well. Um, thank you.
Okay, next we have Jill. Uh Jill, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I have to say, I loved what Nick Brown and Sharon Church and John McCall and Alice Horowitz, my people, said. Um I'm a longtime Glen Ellen resident as well. I just a pet peeve, I lived on both sides of the SDC and uh South of the SDC has never been called Eldridge. It's misnomered. Anyway, SDC is in the center, the heart of our town, and we love it, and we've taken care of it, and we're going to take care of it. I'm concerned that the oversized proposals presented will just adversely impact wildlife habitat and the wildlife corridor, and will be too great of a strain on so many local resources, including traffic and so many more and the entire valley. I want a development plan that meets our community's vision of working in partnership with wildlife and also, you know, meet some of the serious housing needs for a variety of needy populations, including the elderly and special needs and like thinking outside the box. I support a community-driven fourth alternative with a bolder, kinder visionary development. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Derek. Derek, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah, hi there. Um I am a um eight-year Sonoma resident. And I'll be sort of brief and just echo some of the growing consensus that seems to be forming um and officially, you know, offer my opposition to any of the three proposed alternatives. You know, in a climate crisis and a housing crisis, it seems clear that those alternatives don't meet the moment and offer more of the same private development-friendly policies that have created those crises in the first place. It's particularly frustrating, even a little offensive, to hear economic feasibility continually invoked by an outside consulting firm when what's not economically feasible is to live in Sonoma. Um so like many, I'd like to see a fourth option that prioritizes what seems to be a broad community consensus for equitable, affordable housing, uh the expansion of open wild spaces and minimal development. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Larry. Uh Larry, please, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, thank you. And first of all, I admire everybody's perseverance for hanging in there on this rather long call. That being said, uh this is a complex project and accordingly has taken a a long time to develop some complex plans. However, um I we now just have a very short window for commenting on these plans and and evaluate them. So as you've heard in the call from so many people, there's a lot of dissatisfaction with many of the deep, many of the aspects of these plans that have much in common with each other. And there's broad support for developing a fourth alternative. And I I think therefore, if you look at the timeline that's been proposed, we it's really, it's quite obvious that the timeline needs to be adjusted. The the immediate deadline for comments needs to be extended, and more importantly, the evaluation process or the time, the deadline for evaluating and selecting the eventual plan needs to be extended. This will allow for a really a good uh fourth alternative with community input and support to be developed. Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have Christina. Christina, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, thank you. Uh I live in Glen Ellen in the neighborhood just south of SDC. I won't repeat comments that others have already expressed, but there's one um I'd like to make that I haven't heard expressed yet, and that's concern with the proposed road um that would go over to 12 from SDC. Um I heard earlier in the evening some some support for that in comments. But my concern is that there are issues with the road in terms of wildlife, habitat fragmentation, direct loss of habitat, um reduction of effective usable habitat near roadways, direct mortality on roads, um and just an increased noise and visual disturbance for those animals trying to pass through. We have a relatively uninterrupted stretch of rural land um from Madrone up to where Arnold um connects with 12, and this would bisect that in a pretty major way. So um just wanted to get that out there um for people to to consider the wildlife impacts to that road, not just um some of the potential benefits that people mentioned earlier tonight. And otherwise, I will provide some detailed comments, but yes, less density and more community involvement in a fourth alternative. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Fred. Uh Fred, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I'm gonna speak a little bit softly here because I have people sleeping in the house. Um I agree with Stephanie Picard Bowen of Generation Housing, and I would like the consultants and permits Sonoma to look at it innovative variety of affordable housing. I suggest 500 units, 75% of those affordable, and of that 75%, 20% above moderate, 20% moderate, 20% low, 20% very low, 20% extremely low. Um housing essential workers here in Sonoma Valley is not growth, it's displacement mitigation. Uh there's a lot of neighbors on this project that are south going into the springs with a great housing. Thanks very much.
Okay, uh next we have Teresa. Uh Teresa, you should be able to unmute.
Thanks very much. Teresa Murphy here, a 47-year resident of Glen Ellen. I want to thank all the commissioners and others for asking the questions we all have. Henry Ford stated that the most important history is the history we make today. Sonoma County is in a position to make history by allowing a fourth alternative plan for SDC for the following reasons: Need for fluid and expanded area for wildlife, reducing housing density to protect safe and assure safe evacuation, and compatibility with Glen Ellen, and the preservation of 125-year history of SDC. I also suggest that partial funding to diet and body be returned due to the three plans' lack of compatibility with the surrounding community as originally touted by the consultants as a desired outcome. I also wanted to add that the previous discussion about multiple revenue sources for housing, that can be applied to alternative uses as well. A fourth alternative is a must. Thank you.
Okay, um next we have Vicki. Vicki, you should be able to unmute.
Hey, uh Ariel, I think um it's actually Bruce Goldstein. Uh I'm on the wrong.
That's why there's two Vickis. So so go ahead, Bruce.
Okay, thank you, Ariel. Uh Bruce Goldstein, a 25-year resident of Glen Ellen. Um I just wanted to say that in presiding over public meetings on the development center involving many hundreds of people, our elected leadership in the state senate, state assembly, and the board of supervisors, you know, committed to a community-driven process. And what came out of that process and the discussions at Dunbar and um Hannah Boy Center was that the scale of density needs to be consistent with the surrounding community, protection of wildlife corridor and affordable housing. And you've heard that tonight. You heard it if you listened to the 100 people that were on the uh Glen Ellen Community Forum. And if the our leadership maintains that commitment to community-driven process, these alternatives are essentially dead on arrival. And I really think that permit Sonoma, Brian, to serve the board of supervisors needs to present a lower-density alternative, and we need that now. You've talked about the tight timing to delay that puts us in jeopardy with the state. And by not providing that, you're essentially, in my view, usurping the authority and the ability of the board to work with the state to address the fiscal feasibility issues. It was political leadership that led to the presidio being economically feasible by getting money from the feds, and uh we need that opportunity now. There's lots of joint interests with the state that we can pursue. So um thank you very much for your time.
Okay, and um up next we have Vicki. Um Vicki, you should be able to unmute.
Thanks. Um I'm Vicki Hill. I'm a professional land use planner and also Glen Ellen resident. I agree with the many comments made by both the commissioners and other speakers tonight regarding their concerns over the large size of the alternatives and the associated impacts. I want to make it really clear, yes, we need affordable housing, and yes, that housing needs to go on the site, but it's the density, the scale, the numbers in these alternatives that will sacrifice the entire property, the community, and the valley. We need that lower-density fourth alternative, as many others have requested. Um I agree um that this has not been a community-driven process. I think the comments tonight bear that out in the workshop responses where um the three alternatives were rejected. I do want to talk about the massive amount of commercial space sets planned for alternative C. There's no basis for it. The market study didn't identify that. And the idea of an innovation center is noble, but there is no identified tenant. And again, this is not an urban area. Something like this belongs in an urban area. Um and it there must be a way to both save the planet and save Sonoma Valley. Yes, the state needs to step up and help with the um funding, and I agree with John McCall's comments on the approach for moving towards a fourth alternative. Thank you.
Okay, and um next we have Will. Uh Will, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. My name is Will Buckland, and I, along with my brother, own Old Hill Ranch, which shares approximately three-quarter mile border with the developmental center. Our border stretches from Highway 12 across Butler Creek up to the soccer fields and then along John Mesa Boulevard to the corner on Tresle Glen Drive. While I'm concerned about many aspects of these alternatives, I'm going to focus on the protection of the portion of Sonoma Valley that abuts our property. It is what I call mini Sonoma Valley and is where the farm and the dairy used to be. This section of land is precious to me and to us. On its east side, it is protected from Highway 12 by a length of steep hills that run from the Cal Fire Station and the Dog Park to the south end that border our property. On its west side, by another series of hills that run to the east of the main campus. This place is in a time warp. There is no other place in Sonoma Valley where you can go and feel like you are transported back in time like you can in this place. The sky is completely dark at night. It's replete with wildlife, including a pair of golden eagles that I saw there just hunting last week. I've read through the alternative report, and while I'm disappointed in the level of development and the lack of imagination to create something wholly different, it appears to be business as usual. I am most concerned with alternative B, which puts a road to the through the campus uh to Highway 12 cutting through this valley. My time is up. It's obvious I wish for a fourth alternative.
Thank you. Um next we have Pat. Pat, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we live close to SDC. We're longtime Glen Ellen residents. Um and it's just for years now, um you people have met with the different groups in Glen Ellen. Uh and uh it's unbelievable that you came up with these proposals. We disagree with your proposals. Um you're you're it's a developer's dream is what you're doing. We definitely agree with what John McCall said earlier tonight. It's like you don't live here. You don't know what's going on in this community, and uh you really need to uh start over again. Thank you.
Okay, now we have Lucy. Uh Lucy, you should be able to unmute.
Found it. Okay, hi. Um can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Oh, good. Um yes, I think a fourth alternative alternative is absolutely necessary. Um a key word in this is sustainability, but the only sustainability that I'm seeing talked about is financial. Uh housing could be cooperative housing, where, you know, instead of having to to redo all those houses, having community kitchens so they can, those group homes can be used in different ways without having such expensive rebuilding. There's plenty of water on the site. It's been it's been a somewhat sustainable community for 100 years as the developmental center, and um they were growing their own food. We um there was a little a little nod to agri-agri um neighborhood or something like that. That needs to be much more emphasized um throughout, you know, throughout the whole development. And and the housing, yes, we need housing, but what we really need housing for is like the vets for people who need But what we really need housing for is like the vets for people who need, who need support or who are retraining or learning jobs and stuff. And the developmental center has all these buildings that could be put to a use for that sort of community. Let's develop that. Let's, anyway, fourth alternatives. Thank you.
Okay, now we have Brett. Brett, you should be able to unmute.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Hey, everyone. I just really want to appreciate all the ideas. And I think there is a good spirit here of solidarity within the local community. I have faith in that. I do want to say, and just not to, she just actually brought up again, but the vets is such a great idea. And not just because of the great need there, but how they're, you know, really stewards of the land. It would be a great demographic for the area. So I think that's great. And just, I think we need to look at this more. And also use the fourth, I think is the slogan. Thank you.
And with that, Chair Freeman, I do not see any further hands. Oh, now we have a couple. So, okay, next we have Ellie. Ellie, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah, just found it. Okay, thanks. Impromptu, I just wanted to say, as part of the Glen Ellen community, very long-term resident and friend of many of these people who have spoken, I too would support a fourth alternative. And I think if you join arm in arm with this Glen Ellen community, you'll find that they're an incredibly powerful, intelligent, supportive and compassionate group. And we're not a bunch of nimby's. And many of these comments may sound like that, but no, we really want to team up. We really want to be heard. We want to be understood and we want to be seen as a viable partner. And once you turn towards us and pay attention, I think the momentum of this can move really powerfully towards an alternative, a fourth alternative that we can all agree on within the community and that will work financially and in many, many other ways. So please do pay attention to us. We really need it and we have a lot to offer. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Richard. Richard, you should be able to unmute. I see that you're unmuted, but I can't hear you. We're not, we're not hearing anything. I'm gonna, I'm gonna lower your hand and take away your permission, but if you get your sound working, feel free to raise your hand again. Okay, now we have Poppy. Poppy, you should be able to unmute.
Hello, hi. I'm, just want to address jobs. I know that the proposals talk about jobs creation. I just want to give my thoughts on that. I think that of course jobs will be created by this development during the building phase over many years and within the new community through the services offered there. However, we do not have a job shortage. And I'm sure tradesmen from out of the area will be needed for a large-scale development as we've seen in the county rebuilding process over the past few years. Employers struggle to staff their businesses. I encourage that we consider more jobs is not always the answer in every situation. Also, we do not have a hotel shortage. And it will face the same challenges as other locations, which is low-paying hotel jobs do not pan up to compete in the valley housing market. The three main places in Glen Ellen for lodging, Gage House, Olya and Jacklinden Lodge, combined have a total of sixty rooms. For comparison, the Best Western in Sonoma sits on one and a half acres, is forty thousand square feet and has eighty-two rooms, while the proposed lodge is seventy-five to ninety-one thousand square feet with a hundred to a hundred and thirty rooms. I know we need to create revenue to make this work. But I'm wondering, how many market rate homes could we put in that same area as the proposed hotel? And then what would that net? What is the delta between the two? So I can determine the overall economic benefit. I'm interested in exploring other funding streams to support a lower density development with something like seventy-five percent of the homes being affordable.
I'm sorry, Poppy, that does conclude the time. You can send any additional comments via email. Okay, we have Richard again. Richard, let's see if you can unmute.
How's that? Can you hear me?
Perfect, yes.
So echoing a lot of the comments before, I'm the executive director of the Sonoma Ecology Center, Richard Dale. I'm also a member of the PAT. We will send in comprehensive comments, but I really feel that the, the main question I would have is how will the community be able to approach a fourth alternative? How can we bring that into the process in a way that it can be heard? And I will leave my comment at that.
All right. And once again, Chair Freeman, with that, I do not see any further hands.
Give it a couple seconds here. All right, I guess I'd like to thank the public for their comments. And turn back to Brian Rajiv and Helen to see if they have any responses or additional information that I'd like to share based on the public's comments and/or questions.
Thank you, Chair Freeman, and really appreciate the feedback, the emotion. And, you know, I think it's clear, just from a perspective, I mean, I know a number of the callers identify as Glen Ellen residents. I think the perspective is clear. I just, I guess, in response, you know, just acknowledge, you know, what that perspective is. You know, we've definitely given the project team a lot to think about. You know, it's been a long evening. You know, I would say, I think my final comment just would be, you know, we are moving forward with the timeline that we have, that I have presented. Should there be a change, you know, we will definitely be communicating that out.
Thank you once again, Brian. Appreciate it. At this point in time, we'll move you, Rajiv and Helen, back to attendees and we will turn it back to the, the various groups to have their commissioners have comments. At this point, I'd go to Chair Dawson of the North Sonoma, Sonoma Valley MAC for final comments from he and his group of commissioners.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Tim Sherman-Freeman. I'll try to keep this really short. Thanks for hanging in there, everybody. You know, the comments, the public comments, I'm in agreement with just about all of those. Obviously, the shortage of, the financial thing is a critical piece. And I think we need to have more creative funding streams explored. I also liked what Ellie said is this community has an incredible brain trust that hasn't really been tapped into. And that we can help develop this, if you'll reach out to us. So I would really like to see that. I support a fourth alternative. And I also realize that, you know, time is another one of these things that's in short supply, but I think we need to do what we can. I would request that the planning team do what they can to extend the time on these, on this whole process. You know, rushing forward for something that's going to change the future of the valley for the next century, I would say. We shouldn't rush it. So that's all I have to say. And, okay, I'll call, let's go ahead and call my, my team. I'd rather have a look for hands up. So Councilmember Eagles, would you like to make any last comments?
No further comments. Thank you, Chair Dawson.
Councilmember Newhauser, any last comments?
Yes, thank you, Arthur. Appreciate it. It has been a long evening and it's a lot to take in. I do think though, that even though a lot of us support a fourth alternative, I think we have to appreciate the fact that the, you know, county staff and the consultants have worked very hard on trying to bring together a workable plan that would pass the three requirements proposed or posed by the state. And I think the cautionary tale here is that if we don't go with something that is economically feasible, it could be taken, taken out of our hands and be left just to a state negotiating with a private contractor or master developer. So I think that we need to tread very carefully on where we go with this as a community and make sure that the county and our state representatives remain as allies going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Newhauser and Vice Chair Handren.
No further comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Cooper?
No comment, no further comment.
Okay, Councilmember Narda Morgan? She's still with us? Maybe she's not. Councilmember Dust?
Oh, I'm here. I'm here. That's okay. I just want to thank the community for stepping up and sticking it out. It was a very late night and for your elegant, well-thought-out and passionate comments. It's pretty clear to me that, that a fourth alternative is really wanted and needed. And that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dust? Maybe we lost him. Let's see. Oh, Councilmember Aldred.
No further comment.
Okay, I believe that's everyone from the North Sonoma Valley MAC.
Thank you very much, all of the North Sonoma Valley MAC commissioners. Now we turn to Commissioner. I, sorry, my tape. If you'd like to pull your folks.
Sure. Avram, do you have any final comments?
Just to reiterate that it's, it's quite obvious that the community is looking for a fourth alternative. I would encourage the team to explore that and come up with something that the community could back. Thank you.
Iris?
It's, it's clear that the community is ready for something really innovative. And what we've been presented with is not particularly innovative. We want something really creative to come. Thank you.
Ray?
No comment.
Okay, Springs MAC has spoken. Thank you.
Thank you to the Springs MAC. We appreciate your inclusion here. And at this point, I'd like to turn to my fellow commissioners on the Sonoma Valley Citizens Advisory Commission. I'd first like to start and ask the ex officio members if they have any comments. It sounded like they had a few that they'd like to make. I'd first ask Mr. Carr if he had any comments he'd like to make.
Yeah, I don't know. I think I might have forgotten what they were. Just kidding. I just have a suggestion that I wanted to throw out there. And, you know, there, there's been a lot of, a lot of folks commenting about the affordable housing piece of this and how we can try to do something that gets, that actually meets housing needs rather than housing wants. I think market rate housing is a housing want. I don't see it as a need. I, there is a, there is a governor's order asking the state agencies to be aggressive in pursuing affordable housing. Here's a state agency that has land available. Oftentimes, the biggest starting point for a nonprofit to develop an affordable housing project is having some land. So let's, let's pursue that. And let's get some one hundred percent affordable housing sites earmarked on this property as part of the overall development. And, and if you provide land for a nonprofit builder and if you have some pre-development funding coming perhaps from the county or perhaps from, from the state, then you have a chance to enable a nonprofit to put together tax credits and get some units like the Federlot Springs, like the, the recent proposal at Paul's Field. And actually do, do start talking about a higher percentage. And here's the other piece of that, that really bugs me, is that the state of California is now requiring Sonoma County to produce a certain number of housing units for the next housing element cycle. The number is somewhere around three thousand countywide in the unincorporated area. They are wanting fifty-eight percent of those units to be affordable, below-market housing. So how can we stand here and say that twenty-five percent, based on private sector construction, is going to be sufficient to meet Sonoma County's needs? It's not even close. So I, I would suggest that the planning team look into this a little bit more, a little bit further and see if there isn't some avenue, working with the state and working with nonprofit builders to earmark some sites on this as part of this development that would meet at least a fifty-eight percent. And I would argue perhaps one hundred percent. If you got one hundred percent from nonprofits, you could probably add some market rate housing in and around the commercial pieces and that kind of thing. So I just think that's a really viable, financially feasible way to pursue this. At least this aspect of, of the unit is, as far as applying the rest of it, I'm, you know, I'm going to wait and see what develops out of this, out of the staff's reconfiguring these, some alternative. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Branson.
I don't know that I have anything particularly sanguine or important to say other than I would like the community to understand the deal that we have going on here, which is that right now, the community is dealing with the county and negotiating with the county over planning over the site. And if we can't come to some arrangement that is financially feasible, the state is going to impose something that we have much less control over. So I'd, I'd like people to understand, right now, you're angry at the consultants, you're angry at Sonoma planning. But how would you like to have a developer, a rich developer in the equation advocating for what they want? This is our time to figure this out. And yes, I'm sorry. I'm, well, I'm not sorry. This, this is where we have to think about what is financially feasible. This is where the community has to stand up and say, and, and argue around those parameters. And it's difficult, but this is what happens all the time. And, and so it's incumbent upon us maybe to seize this moment where there's only two parties instead of a voracious third party in the mix to come up with a solution. I heard some stuff today that was completely ludicrous. I mean, just, I'm sorry, we're not going to do that. It doesn't pencil. It doesn't make sense. But we, we hopefully can come to some kind of understanding. A private developer doesn't give a rat's ass about wildlife corridors. And so let's, let's not let that introduction of that third party into this equation. Let's figure this out amongst ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Brown, do you have any last minute comments you'd like to make?
I was just disappointed in what I thought was the answers to many of the questions from the county. I do appreciate the necessity of a financially viable option. There's got to be an option among these three with a little bit of finesse on the outside. I'm just concerned that the people of Glen Ellen particularly have a access to the sausage-making process. It seems like perhaps the next step that PRMD and the consultants are going to go through.
Thank you. Commissioner Truesdale? Commissioner Truesdale?
All right. Further comment?
Thank you. Commissioner Kaiser is not here. Commissioner Coconan?
No further comment.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mullen?
No further comment.
Commissioner Pulverenti?
I have no further comments, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vella?
No comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickey?
Thank you, Commissioner Freeman. And I really want to thank everybody. County staff, the consultants and the commissioners, most of all, the citizens who participated tonight. It was a long, long night and you should be admired for your willingness to go through this process tonight. So I do have a comment to make. I'm going to try and read it. SDC is an environmental and historic treasure. And like time itself, once spent, or in this case, developed, we never have the opportunity to gain it back. This development of plans, the SEC, SDC development plans have caused me to proceed through the three stages of political-related mourning, disappointment, frustration, and finally outrage. And the nature of the outrage is pretty simple. Is this the best future that we can envision for this treasure? I just can't believe that it is. I have to believe that with all of the mindfulness that is represented in this meeting alone, that we can come up with a better option. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dickey. Commissioner Spalding?
Thank you. I have quite a different perspective on it. And that is, I don't think we can come up with anything wildly better. Marginally, I hope. I think greater emphasis on defining, protecting and really codifying the wildlife corridor. More work there. I don't even know exactly from the three plans where it is seen to be. And I suspect it has to be a whole lot larger than it would show up on those plans. But it has to be affordable. It's not an option. The, the sort of wonderful pie in the sky. Gosh, couldn't we have a, I'm sorry, Mark Brandon just said it so eloquently as he often does. The reality is, it's a rock and a hard place. The community wants a bunch of things. We're not going to be able to get them all because we can't afford them. If, so, you know, the reason I think I said that about phasing is that if new alternative funding can be obtained over time, then more things can be done over time. The first things should be done as soon as possible to get a revenue stream underway. And then things could remain somewhat open as to what comes next. And some of those wishlist items could perhaps be included. So I wouldn't dismiss the need for phasing. I think it's also a good public relations vehicle for encouraging the community to not be so angry about this. That's, thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just end with just a level of gratitude for both the public as well as all of you and your commitment to our fair valley. So thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to ask for a motion to end the meeting. And I'm wondering if anybody might be so kind as to, okay, I'm seeing. Okay, all in favor, say aye. I hear you all. There we go. Thank you all for, for spending the time with us. And again, thanks to the public for giving us their thoughts. Cheers.
Thank you, Lynn Marie. I can't imagine.